Fred was here, he disappeared. Oh, Fred's getting dessert. Okay, fantastic. All right. Okay, we're gonna reconvene here, and I believe we're on item G, presentation by GL Homes. Hey, Matt?
Hello. Good afternoon. Matt Feeney for the record, Public Works Director. I just wanted to introduce John Asher from GL Homes. This item is pertaining to the work that, the additional study that we'd asked them to do about realigning Logan Boulevard more central to the corridor, as well as modeling and looking at the possibility for a roundabout at the interface with Benita Beach Road. So, they're at a point where they're close to 30 percent plans and would like to give you a presentation and update on the process and where we are and what next steps might be applicable. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Matt. Welcome. How you doing?
I'm doing great. My name's John Asher, and I'm with GL Homes. I'm their land development director here in southwest Florida, and I'm also the project manager for the Valencia-Benita project out on the east end of Benita Beach Road. But, we're here today to talk about an, I'm here because of another project, an obligation we have in Collier County for a project that used to be called The Parklands, and it is the extension of what they call Phase Two of Logan Boulevard. And we've got that obligation to build it from, really, at this point, the only remaining part is Collier County, from the Collier County line north to Benita Beach Road. I thought I was gonna talk about a road project, but I think I'm here, after hearing your other conversations this morning, it's a flood relief, and maybe a regional evacuation route. Maybe we can get funding for that. Stuart's handing out a copy of the files that we've submitted to staff, as far as a written summary, a copy of the PDF is included, as well as the design plans that we have to date, and the detailed cost estimate, which all that'll be summarized here. I won't go into any great detail on these slides, but this first one outlines our obligation. It carries from the original DRI for the Parklands project through the residential PUDs, and then there's a developer's commitment that basically, you know, the key point is on the right, that we have to start construction of this road by the 297th CO for our Stone Creek project. And that's, that's my urgency right now, is I gotta get this thing started. Here's, oops, went too far. This is an aerial photo of Stone Creek. As of the end of the year, we had 207 COs, and we're starting anywhere from four to six houses every week. So, by June, we're gonna be at that number. We're gonna be at 297, and so, we've gotta get started. This is just an overview of the corridor where we'll be working. GL Homes owned, or does own, the 75-foot on the west side next to the Palmaro project, and that's where we had originally planned to build our two lanes and run north. City, we had, there was an approved development order that we extended up till, I think, around 2015. At that point, the city said, "No, it's expired." So, the, towards the middle or end of 2016, we submitted a new application for, to the city, and they came back to us and said, "Hey, there's some things we wanna talk about. We want the divided road section. We wanna talk about a roundabout at the intersection." So, we, you know, a little hesitant, to be quite honest, but we listened, and at this point, you know, I think it all makes sense. So, we're trying to move forward. And then, in the meantime, the city was able to acquire the 125 feet on the east side from the Village Walk CDD to further allowing for these improvements that the city's requesting. So, back in July of last year, we came to the city council, and you guys authorized us to proceed with a preliminary design, and the additional cost for that work is to be, we will be reimbursed with road impact fee credits that we will eventually utilize out in the Valencia-Benita project. So, that was approved back in July, and since that time, we have continued, you know, we've met with staff on a regular basis, that sometimes every other week, we have a standard meeting set up to, you know, discuss the issues, the concerns, any obstacles we might have, and then moving forward with the design process. So, our design team that we're working with, I'll take a brief moment, introduce them, and I think some of them are here today. We've got David Underhill with Banks Engineering. David has done the design for Benita Beach Road dating back many years. So, we engaged him to, and he did the design, the original design for Logan back in the 2007, 2008 era. So, obviously, it made sense for our standpoint to engage him to complete this. So, his company will be doing the surveying, the design for Logan, and the permitting. We also have David Plummer and Associates on the team. They have done the traffic study to document that a roundabout is feasible and makes sense, as well as the actual design for the roundabout. And then, we've also got a geotechnical consultant, YPC Consulting, and they've done the testing, preliminary testing on the soil borings, and then we'll do the, most likely, we'll engage them for the testing on the project. We hired one of our site contractors to do some investigations out there. I'll show you a couple slides in a second, and what we found. And then, the other consultants, we'll do an eventual, they're in the process of a Phase One environmental assessment. I don't know if it's needed, but we acquired this property from Village Walk, and, to be quite honest, I didn't know what was underneath there. And it never hurts. It's a low cost. Let's be covered. And then, we'll, I haven't decided on the landscaping or streetlight design yet, and that's, I'm gonna ask you guys for some input, at least from a budgetary standpoint. So, we get to the fun part, the traffic study. As I said in the beginning, I was a little hesitant that a roundabout made sense. I knew it was in the city's desire, the visioning, but what, didn't know if it was practical. Well, to my surprise, they came back, the initial design, and said the level of services for a standard signalized intersection or the roundabout were, were very similar, and that the delay times for the roundabout would be less. So, you know, there was no concerns with it. After getting a little further into the design, and some configuration changes with the lanes, they updated the study, and the roundabout actually does better on a level of service. So, I'm now a supporter. I can't see this very well, but this is a photo of the corridor after our contractor completed his work. On the left side is Village Walk. This is at Benita Beach Road looking south. There were mounds. There was a lot of, you know, vegetation, small, big weeds, small trees, a lot of vegetation, and a, about a six-foot-high mound that ran almost the entire length of the property. I was very concerned that the previous home builders in Village Walk had buried whatever, whether it be rock, construction debris, you know, trash, and, you know, I didn't want that concern. So, that was one of the main reasons we got this contractor involved. He sorted through it, spread it out, got rid of all the vegetation, and there was very, very little debris in there that, you know. First thing we found was a couple large concrete slabs. Like, oh, no. You know, my worst nightmare. But that was it. You know, there's a couple pipes sitting in there, but other than that, we're in good shape. This is basically at the Collier County line looking north, and the same thing, except this area was heavily inundated with Brazilian pepper. Very thick, a lot of other, you know, weed, trees, and all. So, we got that cleared out. When South Florida was pumping to the south, I don't know if that water was ever getting into the Mirasol Preserve and down to the Coquahatchee. I don't think that water ever made it past this, all these peppers here, to be quite honest. I mean, it, it was higher and drier, and, you know, densely vegetated, but, you know, I can't document that. This is an image of the completed section of Logan Boulevard at the north end of Collier County. This is the divided section that actually Collier County provided. We had a design. It was the standard two-lane that we were originally proposing here. The county came to GL Homes and said, "We found a funding source. Can we take this obligation back from you? We were gonna get impact fee credits for it." So, we, they requested, and we agreed, and turned the project back over to them, and they, they started construction early '17 and just recently completed it. But, you can see here, we've got the bike path on the left. That's an eight-foot path. And the one thing I'll point out that's, will be different, is that they've got the high back or the F-curb on the sides. A little unusual, there's no way to pull off that road if you wanted to stop. It, not sure why Collier County did it, but it was beyond our control at that point, and so, they, they did it that way. We will not be doing that, you know, in the Benita Springs section of the road.
So, if a car breaks down, you're saying, there it is.
You've gotta, you've gotta jump the curb.
Yep.
Sounds like they have to get to Benita.
Yeah, right, right, yeah.
No, it's very unusual. And south of there, it's all two-lane, and they, you know, passed our Stone Creek entrance, they, it divided, and so, I'm not quite sure, but this is what we're gonna do for the city. Here is the typical cross-section. So, the, probably the first, based on your prior conversations and presentations, the, on the right side of that is the potential conveyance that could possibly, you know, allow flow to, you know, flow to the south, you know, from the north side of Benita Beach Road. So, we've allowed for that. There's, at this point, there's no specific design to it, other than, we, we tried to leave as much room as possible. The other thing I'll point out, are a couple of things. We've got a 10-foot multi-use path on the left side of that cross-section, which is up against Palmaro, and be the west side. That will meander, you know, something aesthetically pleasing. We've got, what we did was, we've got 11-foot travel lanes, and we've got an additional four feet that's basically a paved shoulder, and then on the outside, we've got the valley gutter curbing, not that raised curb. Now, nowadays, we can't call four foot a bike path, but it could be used for that. I mean, I think the DOT standards, Dave, you can correct me, but I think it needs to be six or seven feet, and there's all sorts of striping requirements. So, we're gonna have basically 15 feet of paved asphalt, you know, for the roadway, which, in my opinion, will be a much safer scenario. And then, there's also plenty of room left over for landscaping in here. So, and that's one of the questions we're gonna have, is how much, you know, gets included in this specific project. And here is our roundabout design. And I can't really speak to the details or the engineering of it, but we worked, there were quite a few obstacles to get it to fit within the right-of-way we have. We have no corner clips on the Village Walk or the Palmaro or San Remo property. The only problem or impact we have is a small piece, piece of sidewalk on the north side that overlaps into the Lee County-owned property. But, we've, we've got the title work. The surveyor hasn't completed going through all that, but there may be easements there already that allow for that. So, we don't think that's gonna be a major concern. But as you can see, it's a two-lane roundabout. We've got to put all the pedestrian, you know, crosswalks that are necessary. We actually eliminate the turn lane that's on the Village Walk side, the, the eastbound. There's a turn lane, so that will get eliminated. The, other than this area, we are impacting the westbound, Benita Beach Road, westbound, east of this, that we had, we're having to realign it in order to create that offset. We need the offset to slow traffic as it enters the roundabout. The original, the road actually, you know, veers to the north, and it would've gone straight into it, and we wouldn't have had the, you know, the speeds, the slow speeds that we need. And so, if there's any specific questions relating this, you know, we do have the consultants here that will be happy to, you know, answer those questions. And here is what the engineers have come up with as far as the estimated cost at this point. And again, these are preliminary plans. Some of the information is real easy to pull, but some of the uncertainties, we don't know. And so, this is our best guess that's, you know, somewhat conservative, but definitely not, you know, fluffed up over the top. Let you digest it a little bit. I'm in the process of obtaining the final design proposals from the consultants. Again, we've got the original numbers for the preliminary design. There's a chance we probably won't even use all that, the fees that we had in the original, but, you know, that's yet to be determined. And then, at the very bottom, we've got another cost for the drainage conveyance underneath Benita Beach Road. That is not, and that's, hasn't been included in our design yet. So, that's one of the key things that we're gonna be asking for input on. You know, it, it's gonna be a large number of larger diameter pipes, or a large box culvert with a fair amount of cost to it. So, we wanna know if, that the city wants that incorporated at this time.
That's the north to south from, what, a management district property?
Yes, from the north side of Benita Beach Road, south. And that would then connect into that conveyance, you know, channel that we showed in the road So, we need to understand the drainage, or if that's gonna be incorporated. And then, in, in the original preliminary design, we've got some money set aside to provide some, you know, landscape and irrigation, designs and costs, as well as the street lighting. But, I'd rather to get, get feedback from the city on what you'd like to see and what the budgets are. I mean, some, and a lot of times, those are two different things. But, we can engage these consultants, and they can come up with some beautiful designs that everyone's gonna, you know, go crazy over. Well, if it's not in the budget, if there's not money to pay for it, there's no sense doing that. So, you know, just a general idea, and then we can get it honed into, to where it needs to be. But, without that information, we're kinda guessing and probably wasting a lot of people's time, and...
Just, just time?
And money.
Okay, just check.
Time and money, no, absolutely. So, to wrap this up, our next step's here. We need the city to approve what we've done so far. We need to agree on our consultant's cost for the final design. I need to authorize them to move forward. I have to work with the staff, and we've gotta figure out how much of this is going to be impact fee creditable, you know, back to GL Homes, so we can use it in Valencia. And then, we need the input on, you know, the drainage. If we're gonna include it, you know, how, how is it gonna be paid for? And, you know, how can, if we're gonna include it in our project, and GL is gonna foot the bill, how are we gonna get reimbursed? That may or may not be a transportation impact fee creditable improvement. So, is there another source for that? So, it's not part of our obligation, so, but it certainly makes sense to get it done at this time. And then, the last item is, as I just mentioned, a little bit of guidance on, on budgets for, you know, landscaping and irrigation and the streetlights. I mean, we can, there's a lot of decorative light fixtures that'll look awesome, but again, if we're looking at code minimum and just safety requirements, it's, it's a completely different cost and different design, so.
Thanks.
So, that's, that's it in a nutshell. Any, can I answer any questions, or anything, consultants?
Amy?
... on your, on your roundabout, and maybe just because of where I'm sitting, but is that a, is that actually a circle, or is it...
Microphone, Amy, sorry.
I'm sorry.
For others, thank you.
Is that actually a circle, or is it kinda bent on one side?
Oh, it is definitely oblong.
Oh, good. Is that why, do we want it that way?
Yes.
Why?
So, it, we, I can let the designers better explain, but it's in order to get the distances and the radiuses and the offsets to slow the traffic. If it were just a circle in the middle, it wouldn't have worked as well.
Oh, so that, so it's going to slow the traffic, okay. Well, then, that will affect your, your beautification of this thing, too, because it's not gonna be a circle, see?
It won't, but again, from the ground, it's gonna look like a circle.
It's gonna look like a circle, okay.
I think if you're driving down Benita Beach Road, it'll, it'll pretty much look circular.
Okay. And just going back to your list there, starting from the bottom, can we have our consultant help with suggestions for lighting and landscape? Because that's all, that should all be part of the Benita Beach Road vision, right, for the last number seven? Provide budget guidance for landscape rotation, streetlights. So, we're supposed to tell them the, you know, we're supposed to give our opinion about design, but shouldn't they be giving us the, the streetlights and all that stuff? We wanna integrate it with the rest of the corridor, right?
Yeah. So, yeah, part of the Benita Beach Road vision is including aesthetics as well, so...
So, we must, we must have some idea of what we wanna put in there, and I think that's the, that would be my recommended direction. As far as the guidelines for the budget...
It was the whole, the study was the entire corridor. So, what we can do is get some information to DBC and see if they have any recommendations.
Right.
Sure. I mean, it could be, you know, tropical with a lot of, you know, very expensive palms. It could be native with, you know, native palms and, you know, different type vegetation, or a combination thereof.
But, I think they already have a preliminary landscape recommendation, depending on what section of the corridor it is. Isn't that correct, if I remember?
It was based on the zones, correct?
On the zone. So, it has some zone, and we already have some guidelines for that. And then, go, you know, number six, I don't know who can pay for it, but it seems to me makes sense that we should do the drainage at this time, and we have recommendation from the staff of how we can pay for it, or not pay for it, or, or what timeframe we have. And as you know, as you've heard, if you were spending the whole meeting here, we're, we're...
Oh, absolutely.
We have a problem with, with, with money right now. We don't have, you know, we have cash flow problems.
Well, I have, this was on Mr. Beaver's consultant, this was item six, and I happened to notice that that box was checked on every one of his areas.
Yeah.
Right.
So... Well, Fred, where are we on this, on the drainage, do you think? I mean...
Well, see if I can summarize.
All right.
South Florida Water Management and Matt have been working together, doing all kind of modeling to develop how much water can go down and all that. So, I, I believe that it's, they wanna see it happen, and it needs to happen.
Coming in hot?
Always.
Incoming, incoming.
Matt?
Matt Feeney, for the record, sorry. The district, we have had one initial meeting where we actually had him with John's team. The district has offered to look at some modeling for the area, but the reality is, that, that notion of sending water south is a very regional notion. And the modeling that's gonna have to happen for permits to be issued for, for that is, is many years from now. It's, it's a larger effort. And so, there was some consensus that the district could probably work with us in helping them understand so that they don't, don't undersize anything, that you could build the infrastructure with this roadway project. But, you would have to brick off those culverts. And then, you'd have to go through the, the regional modeling that was mentioned, and more of a permitting effort and more detailed modeling that I don't think they're gonna be able to do, you know, that quickly, to really get the other stakeholders in the region and the permits issued. So, I know that's a longer answer, but the district was basically gonna help these folks with getting the sizing right, understanding that the permits that you need to actually make it operational are, have multiple steps and more expenses. And that's why you see in those requests, larger dollar numbers, because there's more to this.
So, are you saying that we could just assume, just put in the swales or something, and not do the culverts? Because that's not gonna happen for five years or something, or...
I would not advise that. If you're, if you're building a roundabout in an intersection, it's a major disruption, and you're also making a connection to Collier County at this point. That's what this road does. So, to go back into the intersection and dig 10, 12 feet deep and put conveyances in would, would generate additional expense. You have maintenance of traffic expense that just isn't there right now, because you don't have that connectivity. So, the thinking is, if we can get the district to help us with the sizing, obviously, we have to find funding, it makes sense to, to put that infrastructure now. You'll, you'll save money. I'm not...
You said no, and now you're saying yes. Okay, now I get it.
Well, I think, I think what Matt's saying is, what we're talking about when we're talking these culverts is under Benita Beach Road only, and that, since you're going to be reconfiguring the road anyway for the roundabout, that now's the time to put those culverts in, but not allow them to be operational until permits are put in place.
Now, I understand.
That's exactly what, what I meant.
Okay, so I go back to my, I agree. Let's put them in.
So, that's a sensible idea.
Yeah, okay, good.
Okay.
Yeah.
Matt? Matt?
Wouldn't, wouldn't...
Come on back hot.
Instead of just bricking those culverts up, wouldn't we wanna put a valve in it, in the brick wall, so that in an emergency, you could at least get some flow through it, instead of having to knock the wall down?
I believe, we're a little early, but they, it would depend on what, what the agencies would allow us to do. You know, obviously, a valve would probably, from my perspective, would be nicer, right? In case there was some kind of emergency and you had emergency authorization, it would make, make that situation easier. I don't know that, that they can get there with us. If they can't, you know, the, the answer is bricked up. It's, it's really, it's gonna depend on what they're willing to do out ahead of a larger permitting effort, modeling and permitting effort. So, I would agree with that, but I, I think that's where some of this discussion clues us in as to what they can, how far along they can come with us.
I'd just like to say...
Assuming that's what city council wants to do.
I'd just like to say, I think this is a great presentation, and thank you for doing it. I'm just wondering if the simplest thing to do is for staff to come back at the next meeting with their suggestion as to the questions that are being asked here, and give us a sense of, you know, cost, you know, the questions that are being asked about aesthetics, landscaping, what's, what the roundabout would look like, rather than have us all sit here today designing a roundabout landscaping. Is that fair, Carl?
Yes, I agree with you.
Is that fair for you?
Yeah.
Okay with you, Mr. Feeney?
Can I add a caveat to that?
And a caveat?
Yeah.
Well, there's extensive landscaping on down towards Benita National. I know Village Walk has a plan that they've looked at, they're somewhat serious about, of kind of trying to extend that kind of landscaping on down to their western corner. I know I've preliminarily talked to a couple other HOAs, and there was, if we could get a cheap enough price, which Village Walk was, that they would all kinda do stuff going all the way down to Grandy. And so, I think, I think we ought, whatever we put in there should have, should work in with what's down towards Benita National, not down to the last tree, because they've got, what's, black olive trees right up along sidewalks, which is not a good thing to do. But, you can have the tree, but not that species.
We know about the black olives from downtown.
I know.
They're gone.
Now, that was live oak tree, so...
Well, I, I think we should consult with our consultants. I think that's really where we should start on all these landscaping things, so that we have a commonality across the corridor. And, and if we get some concept idea, then if we want to integrate with these individual HOAs who might wanna participate, we should encourage them to participate along with our concept.
Could I ask, 'cause I'm in agreement, and I hadn't thought of that, to be quite honest. But, the beach road visioning provides some early guidance.
Right.
But, it's, it's not a final say, and that, now you have DPZ on board.
Right.
And the next meeting may be a little soon, unfortunately. But, if, if we followed that approach, it would give us probably a better understanding, and...
I was just saying, whatever works with his, I forgot your name, I'm sorry.
John Asher.
John, whatever, you know, whatever works appropriately with John's schedule. I mean, if he doesn't need it by the next meeting, that's fine, yeah.
No, we don't need all the answers on landscaping, especially, street lighting. You know, again, from a safety standpoint, we're, we're gonna have some lights at that intersection, and we could certainly have more, depending on what the city's desires are. But, again, as I said in the very beginning, we need to start constructing Logan, and so... And so I know there's a lot of details that may take a while to get worked out. But we need to know that, you know, you're on board with what we're proposing from a, you know, preliminary standpoint. The roundabout makes sense, the costs aren't scaring anyone, and we're ready to move forward and get these final plans approved and get started. Because, you know, going to have to go through a bidding process, and, you know, seeing how you're looking over our shoulders, it's going to take longer than we would typically take. I mean, we have our handful of contractors that we deal with and we trust, and we beat them up against each other and try and get the best price. But I know you're going to, the city's going to be involved in that process, so that's going to take some time. So, but we want to start in June, so.
And we're not agreeing to anything on those budget numbers.
Okay.
That you presented, let's just go back to that screen, why don't we, for a second?
Yeah, no, we can certainly go back to it, but the costs are going to be the cost. I mean, it's going to be what it's going to be unless the city says, no, we don't want to pay that. Then we pull the roundabout out and we go back to the two-lane design. I mean, it.
Can we go back to the?
Yeah.
Thanks. Right.
No, this is, our engineer's taking the plans for Logan, and then the roundabout separately. And then I've combined them, and it's in your packet there. Some of them, you can tell they're estimates, you know, it's a round number that says 20,000 or 50,000. I don't know specifically what that number is, but some of them are very detailed quantities with unit prices that it's going to be pretty close to that cost. And so when we go to bid and we get the lowest qualified bidder, that's, to me, is what the cost is going to be.
Can I make a suggestion, which is, we've seen his presentation today, we need to get input from staff. I think general consensus would want to do this. We need to get input from staff on costs and stuff like that, and chat about that.
Okay.
Is that fair?
Yeah, absolutely.
I just have one other point. We have McMahon that does the pedestrian, bikeway. Have they looked at this at all, you know, because from your diagram, I'm not sure whether, or what are you thinking about the pedestrian and the bikeway? Is that in keeping with what we're trying to do?
Yeah, that was going to be my question too, looking at the roundabout on the Palmira side, it's a little close to that corner. You know, just to make sure that we have room for our multi-use path when it goes through there.
I can't speak to all of that. What I can tell you is McMahon did incorporate and was well aware of these earlier plans. And they have the multi-use path that runs south is in the city's plan that they created. So that is a component of the plan as identified.
It incorporates it or doesn't?
It does. It's called out in our new plan.
How about along Logan Boulevard? I mean, is that?
That's what I'm referencing, the 10-foot path that runs south off of Logan Boulevard.
What about the Benita Beach Road one, then?
I don't believe that that is fully, that's the part I couldn't tell you. That's probably not completely addressed, and this is trying to marry into the existing facilities there.
While we're doing this, can we take a look at that? I'm sorry. Work is never done.
Right, okay. Counsel, anything else? Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counsel, we're now going to move on to the consent agenda.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Please take a look, yes?
I have, we have gotten the condensed list back from Jim Beaver and from APTIM. I was just going to hand this out to you all very quickly, just before Jim leaves. But they did combine three of the items into a number-one priority of land acquisition. So we just wanted to make sure you had this. Any final questions? So that this list can be provided by the end of the day.
No, go ahead, Peter, go ahead. No, please, I'm.
What is return the watershed?
The return the watershed study is the same thing that the Bloomberg grant is. That's the name of the project where we do the total watershed study of all the different systems which are flowing into Benita Springs. And that allows us to reallocate the water to the proper watersheds.
Is that study going to cost $5 million, or is that study an implementation?
That's, the study is going to cost you $5 million because of your request that the city made that they want to use the DHI and other entities of the highest caliber to do that study. This goes back to the Bloomberg grant that you approved.
Yeah, I'm with Mike on this. I know we're asking for a lot of money from Bloomberg if we get the silver ring. And that's $5 million, if we got the silver ring. But now we're inserting that here.
That's one of the options in your, the study that I've done for you. That's the one that involves putting the watersheds back into their proper locations where, and this is important to projects like your Logan Boulevard channel.
But a study costs $5 million?
Yes, because of the computer modeling involved with the type of hydrologic features that you're looking at for a large part of what is Lee County watershed, part of Collier County's watershed, and part of Henry County's watershed.
That's some pretty cool software, huh?
It's expensive software and expensive runs. If you ask the water management district how much they had to spend when they put together things for like the South Lee County watershed study, it probably exceeded that. But, you know, this, basically just to explain to you what you have in front of you is the nine items which I told you earlier were, made sense to be in the LMS. I took and looked at those, and based on the input you'd provide it back to me. Put land acquisition first and combine that for a number of those items. So it shows land acquisition for all of those different projects, and that sums up to 15.5 million for that set. The overall hydrologic study that covers everything that you would need to know in order to put watersheds back into Coker Hachi, Spring Creek, Halfway Creek, and the proper amount of Imperial. Then number three would be the replacement of your stub standard culverts and bridges. Number four would be the local stormwater retrofits in local neighborhoods that need stormwater retrofits. Five would be the sluice gates in five different locations. And then the clean and snag. Sorry about the typo there, but we typed this up while you were meeting.
Yeah, Fred, go ahead.
Number one, which we talked about three or four times earlier, that whole thing of looking and studying each neighborhood it flooded, I don't see that in here. And I.
Go ahead, what do you want?
Pardon?
Now's our time to add, subtract.
Well, no, I think, I would suggest we take a little bit of time to study this. Because, and what our staff, Matt Feeny and Arlene, Matt well understands this, and he can talk to Jim and all that. I don't, we don't have to do this today, and I would urge us not to.
We have to submit a list.
Well, all right, so why don't we go back to the original?
That isn't what Arlene said.
Right.
It's our priorities, preliminary list of potential projects, if cost, if we have them.
But why don't we go back to the original 13, X out the things that Jim said don't properly belong, like education or whatever they were.
Climate change.
Climate change, what doesn't belong on that list.
Yeah, we remove number eight, nine, 10.
Whatever they are, we don't have them here, so no sense. So, and just prioritize that list by land acquisition first, and then Fred's subset of the old number one.
Yeah, the old number one, yeah.
Well.
And then let them fall out.
To clarify, that's exactly what I did here.
Okay.
I took those nine items, which I told you earlier were the ones that made sense for LMS.
Right.
Put them together. The thing that Fred mentioned, which was the neighborhood study would go along with the number, item number four, which is the local stormwater management system retrofits, which is neighborhood by neighborhood.
All right. I'm sorry, it's just that we're at hour five here, and I don't really, I mean, the watershed study, I do not remember. Which slide was that, $5 million, a watershed study? I don't remember it that way. I remember an allusion to the Bloomberg study.
Yeah, that's it.
And saying that was that. So, okay, so what I have on my head, Jim, is Bloomberg was a separate thing. Call it a space shot, you know, we want to try to get that. Hopefully we'll land it. But I didn't see that coming into this as one of the major priorities. Not to say there isn't some work that has to be done in studying the watershed, but I didn't see that here. It's a subset of that other category, we're asking for money in different places.
This is a big regional watershed study. It encompasses the whole watershed of the city of Benita Springs, including areas outside the city limits. It is, I believe, recommendation number five in my project report. And so that's been there from the beginning.
Right.
If you want to go with something smaller, you'll get a result that will continue to leave you with water going into the wrong watersheds.
Peter, if I might, just, you know, so I mean, in my mind, we need, I'm not saying we don't need appropriate studies done, and I understand what you're saying about that, I think. But we've had a flood, we need flood control projects. And we have a need for, I think, probably tens of millions of dollars of flood control projects. And with those projects, we need to understand how they are mitigating. That's the question Amy was asking, what the volume numbers are, subject to what you said. And so when I see study in the middle of this, it's not that I'm not for studying it, but I'm thinking.
Thinking of doing it?
Yes, right, it's almost, it's almost, yeah, yeah. I mean, you know, I mean, the reservoir, not the reservoir, the Empowerment Project is a major thing. If we were to do stuff like in the Golf and Country Club, that's a major thing. Individual fixes, Logan Boulevard's a major thing, Fred's, all major nuts and bolts things that are going to reduce flooding. And I just see this $5 million balloon here that it's kind of like, I mean, maybe my point is moving to the bottom, I don't know.
Okay.
I think the optics of $5 million is not a good thing to do.
I agree with that.
I think that doesn't mean after we hear from Bloomberg, we may not want to put something like that in in another round. But I don't.
I agree with that.
Well, I also might submit that this is more of a county type of project that they should be concerned about the watersheds not working properly. So it might be something that we can suggest, but that needs to be on their list. Because we're going to have enough asking for right here. But again, just submitting that. Why don't you let staff work on this? We think we have direction from counsel. We just wanted you to see what we had preliminarily while the meeting was still going on. Sorry about that. Great, thank you, and thank you very much, Jim.
It's actually hour.
Thanks. And no more questions. I'm going to shut it off. We're going to move on to the consent agenda. So moved, yeah. Counsel, anything we want to yank there? No?
Second.
Okay. Has been a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Further discussion, roll call, please.
Councilman Slackton.
Hi.
Mayor Simmons.
Hi.
Councilman O'Flin.
Hi.
Councilman Gibson.
Hi.
Councilman Forbes.
Hi.
Councilwoman Grumbo.
Hi.
Okay, mayor and council member items. Discuss the attached design renderings related to the old 41 corridor. Peter?
So we are in hour four, and, you know, I wish this were in hour one, because I think this is kind of important. But I asked Jay to come up. So we've already given direction to community development with respect to old 41. We're waiting for them to come forth with a presentation. This is not meant to preempt that presentation. But I did sit down with them, and it's funny, and by the way, John's wife had a baby boy, good news. Yeah, I sat down with John and Jay whenever it was, a week ago. And of all things, John had on his screensaver these images. And the funny thing is, we're used to looking at that one image from the air that we've all agreed doesn't really tell us much of anything. This, I guess, Carl, was part of that package of design sketches that was done three or four years ago when we were in the middle of what do we want downtown. And I thought, man, this is very interesting. You know, not to say these are the exact buildings we want, but in terms of scale, height, and setback, this to me is pretty good. It's pretty good. As opposed to all bets are off, everybody design, you know, which we're up to 70 feet, we're up to 50 feet, whatever it is. So this has a certain amount of height on the street level, and then it has appropriate setbacks. So Jay, did you want to add anything to that?
Not really. In our discussion, we had talked about using this as the basis of what I would call a form-based code.
Right.
So that, this would give you your height, your massing, your building lines, or build-to-lines. When you do that, generally, now we've established what the building's going to be, the form base, we don't worry so much about certain other things in the code. And it actually becomes a simpler code, although it becomes a more exact code when it comes to form.
The form, not, people have their own architecture within the Florida style. It's just the basic sense. So if you went to Fifth Avenue South, in essence, that's what they have. They're saying, here's the basic form of the buildings. We're not.
It also, by doing this, I think it can be drafted in such a way, the code, that it takes out, currently, we have people come in and say, well, old Florida's the style, but I want old Florida modern, I want old Florida Key West, I want old Florida this. I think when you publish it this way, it's more exacting as far as what you're going to get look-wise. When you do that, we're going to give up, I think "give up" is the wrong word. The standards by which we evaluate certain things will be different. Because it's going to be based about the way the building looks, the way the building performs. You know, the old thing in architecture is form follows function. But if I do the math, I can take the form and it'll create the function. And that's the basis of going with form base.
And the only reason I'm suggesting this is, this is a $30 million investment of taxpayers' money downtown. We've made that investment. You know, we've all talked about, like Peter talked about a few weeks ago, was a house on Beach Road and such. You know, here, the taxpayers have put in, by the time you take the 20 or 21, whatever it is, and the interest expense and acquisitions over time of buildings, it's somewhere between $20 and $30 million that the taxpayers have footed the bill for. So the other nice part about this is, and staff would have to work on this, this is not, this is it, forget it, is it provides more certainty to the development community. One of the concerns I have for the development community here is they're coming into Benita Springs City Council with five-hour meetings, and we're spitballing things with every project. Sometimes that's needed, sometimes that's needed. But I would hope we could give some basic guidance to downtown rather than having each developer coming in, well, I'll tell you what, I want to change the comprehensive plan, I want to change the code, I want to go to a PUD on this, and the other guy wants to do that. Provide a little more certainty for everybody, including the taxpayers who have footed the bill here.
And just from a community development perspective, we can incorporate this into the discussion we're scheduled to have in a couple of weeks. If this is the direction, you want to see sort of a form-based outline, how it could be applied, we could go ahead and include that in that workshop.
That's what I'd like to suggest.
I would think so, right? Amy?
Yeah, no, I'd like to have a picture concept like this, but I don't really understand, because I think one of the things that is appealing about this is that there's a lot of variety into the facades of these. And the buildings are relatively small, so you could conceivably have one ownership be responsible for more than one building. Isn't that correct?
Correct, I mean.
Because unless the lots are, I mean, these must be really small lots here that they're showing in the picture.
Well, I think as you look at some of these buildings, some of these buildings are 50, 75 feet along the frontage. And considering that the average lots that are planted are 50 feet, it allows for both acquisition, which makes sense, and it also allows for individuals to come in and develop.
When you do this sequentially, how do you get a product like this? Or you might do an isolated building here and an isolated, but how do you really accomplish that, even if we have a concept?
This is where, and this is, we'll be working with the city architect on this. This is where that you take the form, in other words, we would have a build-to-line, not a setback line or minimums or maximums. It would be a build-to-line, you will build a building to. You will build a building to this line along the road. In front of that, there'll be the options for porches and balconies and so forth as, as a concept. But part of the other concept is, is that we will have to be very specific. Some people call it a beauty book, some people call it a design book. But we'll have to be very specific about certain things, such as roof materials, roof pitches, that whether it's gable ends, hip ends, those type things, these are all gables, which really attract to the, the Florida's design, where most builders would prefer to build hips because it's easier, cheaper, stronger. This takes a little more effort. And so we need to get with our city architect, if, if this is the format we're going to go with, and come up and just have very strict design standards. And yes, they'll, they have variety. If you look at this particular photo, and I'll just walk you through it real quick, you'll see that there is some that have Bahamas shutters. They're at the build-to line, but there's other buildings next to it that have balconies. And, and some of them, balconies are what I, what I would call more skeletal, so that you actually see the building, you see the architecture, the, the texture of the building. And then it would also, also, we've already have the color palette. So those are all things that, that have to be incorporated. So you'd have a, it, the code would look a lot different than the code looks now to do this.
In these diagrams, you have some buildings that have an extra floor, or some are low, or some are high. How do you, how do you give equal opportunity to different developers that might come forward with that?
There, there is where we'll have a discussion about what I would call getting away with worrying about densities and intensities, and probably with the form base, go strictly with the floor ratio. And so depending upon their design, there's a certain floor ratio that, that each lot has. And then that owner can decide, does he want to use more of his lot for building a state two-story? He had the same amount of square footage if he wants to go three-story, but just getting, going three-story doesn't give him more square footage. The square footage is based upon a floor ratio of the lot. So again, that's, that's another function of the form-based code versus the more traditional Euclidean codes that, that you're used to.
The only other point is, I have put in 41 feet here. I am very concerned about a car, a canyon effect downtown, is why I put that. My understanding is that's what Naples has. I, I sure know the number that I saw in the comp plan is, from my perspective, too high, unless we want a canyon downtown. And I, and I don't think that's what the people who said we want to spend tens of millions of dollars downtown wanted.
I, I think the, again, keeping in with the form and the scale, and understanding that the property owners would have, have options. We have a requirement, they meet FEMA standards. That doesn't mean they have to raise the property to FEMA standards, they can do floodproofing. Punta Gorda requires that in their historic district, that you just can't jack up four feet of fill and make everybody have ramps to the buildings, that you have, that you build it at street grade. So one of the things you'd want to look at as part of the form-based code is to say, finished floor will be arbitrary number, a foot or a foot and a half above the crown of the road. That allows for sidewalks and safety and drainage and so forth. But if they have to floodproof, they would have to floodproof. The other thing that is different, and it is different in the downtown than other areas of the city, is if, if you pick a height, how we measure. Now, we always measure from finished floor in the downtown, but the height we have is measured to the eaves. Do you want to continue that? Or do you want the more traditional, which is the average between the peak and the eaves? And that's the more traditional method of, of measuring. And, and that makes a difference. It also makes a difference, again, in your design book, whether you allow a four and 12 pitch, or an eight and 12 pitch. Again, I haven't consulted with Sam Vincent a great deal on this, but I think you're looking at pitches between three and five and 12. More traditional, more appropriate of what you would see in the area. And, but again, that would be a standard, and that would be, there would be a minimum pitch and a maximum pitch for the roof design. So you're going to totally change the methodology of dealing with things downtown. But in doing so, two things, to, to answer your question specifically, Councilman Crumbu, is that, to be fair, you go to the floor ratio, and they can choose whether they build one-story, two-story, three-story. It's their choice based upon their businesses, the uses, and what they want to do there. So everybody's treated equally. So no, no, nobody gets undue advantage over somebody else, which I think is important. The other thing is, is that the design standards, there's enough flexibility that you get a diversity of design, but you're not getting a wild design. You're not going from one extreme to the other. You're keeping it within the, the lanes. So if, we, we can do that if that's, if that's the direction you want us to go.
I'd like to suggest we go in that direction, not to make a decision, but go in that direction, and have them come back and present that.
Yeah. Fred? Mike? Fred? Mike, then Fred, how's that?
Well, and the other thing you, you mentioned, we did spend a lot of money down there in order to attract people to come in and develop. I just don't want us to be too strict and actually make them not want to develop by, you know. So I mean, if it is in their best interest where we, we have a, a basic design, so that way they're not coming in here doing a presentation, and then we all say, that's not what we're looking for, and they wasted their time, you know, months and months of their time, you know, coming to present to us. So I, I guess something that would kind of give them more of our idea upfront, so that way they could kind of design to that would be better. The, the other thing, you know, it's, it's got to be worth their while when it comes to the height, you know? I, I don't want to see 75-foot tall buildings down there. You know, I'm not sure what that magic number is. I know, what is it, right now, we do like five stories approximately?
Right now.
That's what longitude is going to be?
Right now, it's 52 feet to the eaves, and there's a 5% variance for unique designs, so you can go another 18 inches or so. I mean, there's, but then.
So that's four, four to five stories, depending on building heights.
That's four to five stories, depending how you go. But then the roof is above that.
Yeah.
So again, it's how, how, and, and how you want to measure it. To, to me, probably the, the biggest thing that I would see is that I would strongly suggest a floor ratio that's considerably higher than what we have now, but get, get rid of everything with how you calculate density and all the other stuff. So that it's, here, this is how much square footage you can build.
Here's your box.
Here, here's your box. And if you want it to be two stories, or three stories, or a partial three-story, those are all considerations that the individual owner can make. And, and I do believe, from conversations I've had also, that there is some uncertainty out there based upon people coming in, and, oh, we don't like this, we like this. Of course, everybody's pushing the limits. If you define what the limits are, I think clearly, they know what's, what they can do. And I, I do think it, it's helpful for them to quantify their, their ability and make true assessments of the value of the property. Of course, that value leads to purchase and development.
And then you also mentioned the color palettes, and I, I love all these colors that are in these photos, but I know these are not the color palette. So I, I would like to see more colors like this, a nice vibrant, you know, downtown, like, you know, purples and blues and salmons, and, you know, this light green. Those colors are not in our current color, color palette. So I'd like us to take a look at that, and, you know, be able to, you know, if everybody's agreeing that these are nice pictures, then, you know, the colors apply there, so.
I will make sure I talk to Sam about that.
Great. Counsel, anything else here?
One, one question.
Oh, go ahead.
In all this that we're talking about, are we going to also pretty quickly deal with the subject of the double counting?
Well, by definition, he has.
Yeah, but by definition, it would do away with it. I, I mean, the, the concept would be, again, I, I hate to throw numbers out because we've got some research to do. I, I know, I think pretty much where it winds up, but we want to get our facts straight. If you're allowed so many square feet, and if the first floor has to be commercial, and if, and if you're allowed the height that says it's three stories, we see three stories here, we'll use that as an example. And if, if my floor ratio is, let's just say three, three times whatever the size of the lot is. So you could go three stories. Does it really matter if, if the first floor is commercial, and if the uses that we allow, the restaurants, the boutiques, and so forth are down there, and we allow a certain amount of office on the second floor? Does it really matter if it's residential, as long as they don't exceed the floor ratio? But they're going to, one of the things that we will look at, and we'll have an answer for when we come back to you, is there, and the city does not currently have this in any of its districts, there needs to be a minimum square footage per unit, so that we don't get an unattended.
Right, a warrant of rules.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So there would be a minimum square footage, and, and I, I already have access to about 10 different codes that tell me what different places are doing. And so we can come up with that. At that point in time, there is no double, it's floor ratio. And the idea has always been that there should be enough residential support, the, the commercial. I think at that point in time, it's up to the individual owner to figure out what that is, and of course, us with the city to see if that, if that makes sense. And I think, again, we're going, we're taking the form, and the function will follow it based upon the guidelines within the form.
The density falls out of the FAR.
Well, my, my concern continues to be a commonality of stories. You know, this is nice because we don't have that here. And so if there is a certain economic benefit to have a certain ratio and a certain number of stories, what prevents everybody having the same results here? So, I mean, you could talk to us again when you have more specifics.
And, and that's, that's a valid point.
So I, I thought we should, I, I'm in favor of doing maximums, definitely on the stories or whatever. I think that would be good, because I personally don't want anything more than probably three stories, but I'll talk to somebody about four stories, but that's my opinion, you know, it's not.
I want to make sure I understand, because I, I think I understand, but I want to make sure I, I've made the note properly. And that is, again, looking at the picture, we don't want every building to look alike.
Correct.
So we can have a build-to line, and, and we'll figure out some parameters, whether it's a balcony, or it's a shutter, or a canopy. And, and there, there are ways that that can be addressed, and, and we'll look at some best practices on that.
Amy's asking the same exact question I asked when I met with you and John, which is, one of the nicest parts about this is the various articulations. But any one person would say, the biggest one, that's for me.
Correct.
We, we, we will, we will have some regulations in there. And, and we'll look at some other form-based codes. And it may be block by block rather than lot by lot to, to make it functional, but I think, I think it can be accommodated.
Great. Great. Counsel, anything else? Fred?
Will parking still be a overriding governing thing?
Parking will always be a function of this, and, and that's something that lot owners have to address one way or another. And I think that that's something that, in our future discussions, those workshops, we're going to have to work out some of those details.
Thank you, Jay, and thank you, Peter, for bringing this up.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Absolutely. We're going to move on now to an errata sheet that I brought up, and we heard from some folks earlier, receive an update on the condition of Marni Fields. And I think as we sit here four months after the hurricane, I want to hear more about, maybe not so much what we've done, but what we, what we need to do to get it open and when.
Sure, absolutely. Nicole Perino, Parks and Recreation Director. I can tell you the steps that we are doing to move forward to get the facilities open. We are working with FEMA. The facility will be site inspected on Monday, so they will look at all of the damages that we do have. We did recently hear from insurance as to what is covered, what is not. The fields themselves are not covered, so anything to do with fixing those are not. But the fencing, the goals that were damaged, irrigation, things like that are covered. So we do have to follow both our insurance, as well as FEMA procurement policies when we go forward in fixing things. The southern half of the fields, our, our staff and our vendor JSM have completely fixed. So the southern two fields are complete, they are ready to go. Our problem lies in the northern section. What happened there was the large ruts and ravines that go through the two northern fields are due to, unfortunately, this had to be done, were FPL trucks. They had to come in to fix the power lines. They came in, in the water, and created large ruts through the fields. As of yesterday, they were still creating these large ruts through the fields. So we are working with FPL in terms of, we're actually working with gentleman Craig Coughlin on seeing what FPL can do to fix them, as well as other ways for them to go about working on the power lines. Because this will be a continual problem that we're going to have in terms of the northern two fields. So that is a, a big insurance liability for us in terms of, it's not as simple as the southern fields. Our staff was able to get rid of the, the small ruts and ravines that were just caused by water flowing through, where these ruts are caused by giant trucks driving on wet ground. So we are working through those issues with FPL to see if we can fix that. The fencing, of course, is an issue. We can't remove it, unfortunately, because that is a liability for us in terms of balls flying into the road. So we do have to have some fencing up. That's just a requirement that we have. Again, even in terms of working with the baseball fields, there aren't any fence companies around that can even get to it until March, April, May, something like that. Our insurance does cover it, but they also require three quotes, which we haven't been able to get any at this point. But what we are looking to do so that we can move forward and try to get it open is I am working with Dennis Slayball, our risk manager, on how we can block off certain areas so that there are no longer liabilities to us, but that I can open those southern portion fields. The northern portions are going to be difficult. That is going to take more time. But we are working, and I do have a meeting with him, on site to figure out how to barricade those ideas or those sections off on Friday, so that we can get that southern portion open as quickly as possible, because we're ready to go in that section. But I have to try to mitigate those liability issues, such as currently we have major issues in terms of impalement issues. I have, if someone's running and not paying attention, they could get impaled, which is a huge, a huge risk, a huge liability for us that we're trying to avoid. So these are the things that I'm working with Dennis on, on how we can, we can go ahead and open, but barricade those sections off so that we're still covered and that people are protected that are using those facilities. But that's in terms of where we're at at this point. We do have quotes for the goals that were all, all of them were destroyed. We have submitted those. Well, we will be submitting those to insurance. It's about $6,000. So we do have different things that we will be submitting so that we can get reopened. But that's kind of where we are at this point. If you have any questions?
Nicole, how cooperative has FEMA and insurance company been?
Um, they're cooperative. It's just, it's timely. It, it takes a while. Insurance.
So what are we looking at in terms of time? I mean, I think that's the issue.
Sure. Well, if I can get the southern portion, we can open pretty quickly.
Right, right.
If I have to wait for FEMA and insurance entirely, I mean, you're looking at summer, fall. So that's what we're trying to avoid. We're trying to avoid and be able to open sections that as we get other sections, okay, this field is done, we'll open a little bit more, open a little bit more, so that we can at least get two additional fields open. Because Marni does have three technically. You can make it four for kids. But it's that northern section that is really giving us the biggest trouble. But we're working through that and seeing what we can do to get that fixed. But that is a complete regrade, tear it up, go through fixing all the irrigation, completely tearing it up and doing a resaw. So that one is a bigger process and ordeal in fixing than the southern section was.
Can you, so you have a meeting on Friday and a meeting on Monday?
Yes. Friday is with our risk manager on how we can block off those areas so that I can open the southern portion. And then on Monday, we are meeting with FEMA site inspectors, where they actually go through and take inventory. They measure, do all the things they do so that we could possibly get FEMA funding to fix that.
Can you send us an update after those two meetings?
Absolutely. Sure.
Great.
And I will tell you, Mr. Mayor, from our point of view, the Friday meeting is going to be more important than even the Monday meeting for getting the fields back open again. And we, we are looking for our risk consultant to give us specific recommendations on how to barricade off, to physically protect the players from the dangerous parts of the fence that still remain.
Do you look positive on that? I mean, you think we'll be able to do what? Do you look positive on that? Uh, uh, I mean, you think we'll be able to do what Nicole wants to do?
We're, we're, I mean, we're always hopeful, but we will not know until he gets on-site and can determine what we, what we can do.
Okay.
Um, just, just having orange tape up, no, that's just scary.
That's not gonna-
But there might be other opportunities for us to barricade them off, to the point where even if the player runs into the area, that they will hit the barricade as opposed to the fence and be safer.
Gotcha.
Even though it doesn't sound that way.
It's similar to what we did for the baseball fields. We did just reopen those two weeks ago. Uh, we did have to work through the same system. The fence damage and the damages there were not as great, um, unfortunately. Marni Fields, according, I mean, even when we met with our adjuster, were, they said, "This is a total loss." Um, so they said, "Start over." Whereas the baseball fields, the fields themselves didn't have any damage whatsoever. It was lighting damages, which were a safety issue, and it took that, us, a while to find a company that could get the lights down so that we didn't have that issue, as well as fencing issues. That, the fence there isn't fixed either, but we've figured out a way with our risk manager to barricade off those areas, that if someone runs into it, they are running into a barricade and not the fence and getting hurt.
And you have a date for the lighting yet at all?
For the lighting of the baseball fields?
Yes.
That's going to be a while, a long time, but-
Just like everybody else with the cages.
But, yes, but there's more to this. Um, we have been working with Little League, they have completed their tryouts, they've been using the fields.
Yeah.
And for what they have going on, they don't feel that we'll even need portables at this point. They have enough lighting, we've angled them, uh, a certain way that there aren't any dark spots, so we should be in good shape for Little League season. Yep, we should be in great shape. We, aesthetically, it's probably not as pretty as we would like it to be, because, you know, the fencing does look weird and lights look odd, and we do have some stucco things and some smaller things, but it doesn't stop us from reopening.
But I, but I fully understand having Mike Cage going down and other people in the neighborhood. It's April before anybody's even gonna come there.
Yeah, we have, the majority of our parks, fifteen of the twenty-one have fence damage. Um, and it's a variety of different damages, we have them all over the place, and some are bad, like really bad, which is at Marni, others aren't as bad. Um, so we've been able to fix those and barricade, but none of the fencing has been repaired or replaced due to lack of contractors at this point.
Look forward to those updates, um-
Sure.
Certainly after Monday, and, um, certainly personally getting involved if needed. Because, you know, we have not only a backlog of players that wanna play soccer there, we have, at the Benita Middle School, we have leagues that are basically preventing schoolchildren in Benita Springs from playing. Out-of-town players, you know, coming to play in the leagues.
Sure.
So if, if for any reason we're gonna have any delays or extended delays at Marni Field, I'm gonna say we get involved in looking at letting residents of Benita Springs play soccer first, and worrying on Benita Springs property, and worrying less about the out-of-town leagues.
Sure.
And that's gonna sound heavy-handed, but there's a reality here that the citizens of Benita Springs wanna play soccer, and, and, and they deserve to, they absolutely deserve to. So look forward to that update, and if we need to interfere with these leagues, I guess we're gonna have to look at that too.
That's actually in, in their league contract and all of their league agreements, that, um, priority would be given if the situation arises, where there would be priority given if, depending on the percentage of Benita Springs residents in each league. So that is in our agreements already of something that we can do.
Mm-hmm, great, great. Counsel, anything else on this? Okay, great, um, thank you, Nicole. Errata C, receive an update on flooding mitigation efforts, Fred Forbes.
Yeah, I'll make this fairly brief. Everybody got this?
Yep.
And I think the important takeaways from, uh, what I wrote down is that, number one, be aware of this county effort that they've got, because there's, there's one thing in there that they- Now, this is Commissioner Keiker, who, you know, like, he's one of five, but he said very emphatically that Lee County wanted to be the overall coordinating body of everything that's going on in Lee County in flooding. And that, then they were talking about this interactive website that they have, where you can post a question or an observation on this. It's a big Google Earth style that zooms down to where you can actually see the outfall control structure of Worthington. A little blue dot, and you click on it, goes up to that. There are one problem that I see with this, and I wanna talk to several others about it, and that is that their, their concept is good, but being hypothetical here, let's suppose Worthington, they're interested in knowing what size the condu- or the storm sewer is on both sides of Benita Grandy, south of Benita Beach Road, which was a privately built road. They are claiming that they talked to somebody in the city and they didn't know what they were. So Commissioner Keiker says, "Put that on the map, and we'll get the answer to it." The problem with that is, if you have them doing that, how do, like, if, if that question pertains to something, or where they give an answer, will everybody that's a stakeholder in the process know what's going on? It's, you know, I think the ambition is good, but, uh, that's the downfall. And it turns out that's simple, that question can be simply answered. The road was built for one purpose when it was built, to go to the front gate of Quail West. Who built the road? Quail West. South Florida Water Management approved building that storm sewer in that part of the street. So Quail West should have the answer to that, so should South Florida Water Management, but that's how that road was built. And we took over, what, the maintenance, Carl, to the Worthington Southern Property Line, as I recall.
Yes.
But we don't own that part, just only maintain it, or did we own it now?
For the Worthington?
Yeah, the, on the Benita Grandy, south of Beach Road.
Right.
Do we, do we simply do the maintenance to the Worthington Southern Line, or do we actually own that road now to there?
Um, we, we have actually made traffic decisions on there, so I would think that we own that road. That is public road, city maintained.
Right, okay. Anyway, so they're, they're in for this thing, and the, the other thing that they were stressing is these independent district consultants that are looking at stormwater problems in the county, which includes the city. Now Jim has talked to them, uh, Matt Feeney talked to them, I think, when, uh, Jim went and seen them, in fact. And there'll be future conversations, but they are intending to plan to spend a lot of money within the county. But it will be per the recommendations of those fi- or four companies that are doing the flood assessment work for the five political boundary districts of the county. The other thing that, uh, I think was interesting is that when Matt and I attended the, um, Water Initiative Committee for, for, uh, Southern, Southwest Lee County, there was a presentation by Roger Kopp, and, uh, it was all on what they had been doing primarily for Astero. But they had modeled Astero, uh, and then ran a hundred-year storm on it, and compared that to the actual water marks that you can go out and measure in Astero, and compared what the computer said, and generally, the computer was coming up with a lower number. But there's, Roger said one reason that, that they had that anomaly or difference was that the ground, they didn't input into the computer model that the ground was fully saturated, so it'd have some absorption. The other thing is, it wasn't a hundred-year storm, it was between a hundred and two hundred. So that would give you more water, which would make the model give you, give you more. But, uh, Roger did see Jim's presentation, which was much like you saw it. And then during his presentation, one of the things he said was, "We only real solution to beating this flooding, we have to seriously, seriously increase water retention, stormwater retention." And that's, I mean, that's, that's so logically simple that, that even the experts haven't recognized that apparently until- But for Roger Kopp to make that admission to that group, I thought was significant.
Roger, in that case, is working for Village of Astero?
Yeah, he's working, yeah, he and Kevin Irwin have a small contract with Astero to upgrade their model just to fit, uh, Astero. I did ask one question, I said, "Uh, we have all these drone flights, we, we can take those, or somebody can, when, if we ever model our whole city, which we should, and the outlined areas that contribute to our flooding." I said, "If you can take from those drone things and come up with water marks." And he's, and he said, "Oh, yeah, you can," and he said, "We, what we did in Astero, we used the Google Earth photos that were shot roughly when we did our drone." And I, and I said, "Yeah, but Google Earth had a cloud layer, you only had little clear patches here and there." I said, "We were below the clouds, so you can use the Google Earth and the drone and cross-check." But I said, "Would that be useful if we ever go to model and wanted to validate the model like they're, they were doing?" And he said, "Absolutely." So I think that, that's good, and, and self, I would leave you with this. The relationship with South Florida Water Management District is better than I've seen it in a long time. Does it mean it is gonna be forever that way? I don't know, because if I could predict the future, I'd make more money in the stock market. But it's, it's better now than it was, and I think, I think we can build on that. And they, uh, you know, they're spending over seven hundred grand just on the Imperial River. They're gonna go back in where DEP has worked, and all they did was handle the navigable channel. They're gonna follow in and do from the edge of the channel to the shore, so that you have a, a total clean river. And that, and I do agree, anyone that thinks that the answer to reducing flooding significantly in Benita is cleaning up the river, should go look at the pictures again. Is that, that's just a small percentage of the problem, small percentage.
So where is-
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
No, I, when I reviewed your, um, uh, report here, one of the things that struck me, I, I think it reinforced a lot of the work that we're concerned about in the projects that we're trying to pursue. But one of the things that I have an ish, uh, concern about is this notion about the role of Lee County in their four districts, and the engineering people that are gonna participate in that. Um, I was just asking staff if we have, um, engaged with these, like Waldrop Engineering, which is the one for our district, and what kind of interaction do we have? Because it seems to me that that's very, 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 very important, and that somehow we have to reinforce the kinds of things that we're interested in, uh, and that they don't come up with some concepts that, you know, we're not really it, uh, we're interested in, let's, let me put it that way. I, I have concern about this, that because it's a district-wide thing, and where are we in inter- interacting with them? Because we have very specific ideas about this, and we have a consultant that has already given us a, a pretty good first pass of where we're supposed to go. We have our drone pictures, we know the experience from our neighborhoods, and I just wanna be certain that this engineering firm is on board with us. And if we're not, if they're not on board with us, I want, I would like to know what they, what area, projects that they think are more favorable than the ones that we're doing.
So-
Is Matt still here?
He's only been-
Well, the reason I was asking-
Because I know Jim Beaver has been in touch with them.
Right, but Matt was at the meeting.
Has he been in touch with once, and has there been a back and forth, an interaction? I mean, we have a dialogue, or are we just having a one-way conversation here?
Uh, Matt Feeney, for the record, Public Works Director. We did meet, uh, with the, the county's consultant, uh, which is Waldrop Engineering for our area, as well as Jim Beaver. I, I am not aware as to additional conversations that Jim has had with them. What I can tell you, though, is most of what they were commissioned to do, and they gave a presentation at this meeting, was more data collection than project definition. I think there's a whole, from what I understand of the county's strategy, and I have been talking to the folks that retain these people, and asked for a draft copy of their, their information, which should be coming out in the next week or so, from what I understand. There is still another phase, uh, where the county will, will be retaining firms, soliciting firms, and retaining them over the next three months to take this information that was collected and come up with ideas. So I think actually the city is a little ahead of these guys, uh, and really what this firm, these firms that were, have done in the, in the phase of the county's approach is, was more detailed data collection. It's, they're really not at the point of project recommendation.
But if you go on their website, which I've done two or three times, and I haven't spent hours on it, it looks to me like the data they're collecting are, "There's a tree down in this river, there's a bush down over here, there's vegetation over here." In other words, Fred, I don't know if you have a different view, but, um, it, the data they're collecting uh, lead you to a feeling that if we wanna understand the flooding, we obviously have, need to understand vegetation in the river.
I, I talked-
Is that, is that unfair?
Uh, that's not unfair, um, and, and in some areas, I think they, they had some issues further to the north of us, where, where maintenance of those facilities-
Island Park.
Yes, and St. Carlos Park in particular.
Okay.
Um, so, so yes, it's, it is a fair statement that they are collecting information along those lines. I did talk to David, um, specifically about our case, and-
David?
David Willams, he works for Waldrop Engineering, and that's who's been doing the work in our area. And he, he relayed to me that the information that he had been collecting and digesting was more along the lines of where the water got within the city, so, so not as mundane as what you're saying in maybe other regions. Uh, more water lines on homes, uh, and he, he referenced the mapping to, to figure out the, the overall impact. And from there, you can, you can understand where there may be opportunities to, to help it along.
Well?
And I was just gonna add, as, as we heard earlier today, you know, certainly, as, as, obviously, we are working here on Benita Springs priorities and Lee County priorities, this, you know, this, this app, I mean, it's a statewide, I mean, regional for sure, statewide effort. So, uh, whereas we're ahead of the game, I think we need to stay, we can, need to continue to stay ahead of the game, but also realizing that we have South Florida Water Management District coming in here, uh, for one-on-one meetings. Uh, we need, we need to stay ahead of the game, but we don't need to get so far out ahead that we're being counterproductive. Is really my only point.
But where's the game being played, is my question? All right, so, um, I don't know if we're ahead of the game or playing a different game.
Right.
Is my question.
Well, I-
So, so we're, we're, we're talking about water retention, et cetera, okay? Um, and now we're trying to read tea leaves of, um, what other people believe their priorities are.
Right.
So I don't, I-
Well, let me say it a different way.
Well, it's a different-
There, well, let me say it a different way. There was a group that wanted to pass an initiative to send it to Tallahassee, to have Tallahassee try to tell, tell people what to do. I take a different approach, you don't send something to Tallahassee to then have it filter back to tell anybody what to do. You work with the people that you're involved with to get a project done. So I think my, I might, when we wonder about where the game is, the game is working with people, not trying to dictate to people what needs to get done, hoping that they do it.
Well, excuse me, that-
Maybe that's, maybe that's set a different, I'm not, not, not sitting at this dais.
Oh, thank you.
No, 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 not sitting at this dais at all.
No.
And if you haven't heard those comments, I would ask you to get in the game, because that's what's going on around you.
All right, so, so let's assume other people are trying to do that, but we're not, all right? So I'm just trying to stay on this one narrow point, which I think is highly important to us. But Fred, you wanna go ahead?
Well, no, I was gonna give you, I was gonna give you a little more, little more information, which will probably invoke more discussion, but-
All right.
Mike?
Number one, what I've told you, what came out of the mouth of one county commissioner. However, at another meeting that I was at, at occasionally, Amy goes to the same organization, talking to Commissioner Hammond, he indicated the same thing, that eventually, out of these different efforts, the county would be expending money to, from their point of view, reduce flooding in Lee County. Now, that's, so I, I think that they are going to, I think there'll be a lot of, there'll probably be a, the follow-on effort that Matt, but I think we have to work with that, we, we have to work with them and get the best out of them we can get. I do know that from what I was told about the meeting with Waldrop, the guy agreed with maybe half of what Jim was saying, the other half, he didn't really. And that's not to be surprised, because it's like attorneys. Too good attorneys working on the same case, you're gonna have somewhat different strategies of what to implement. Doesn't mean that either one is wrong or right, that's just-
Well, which half, though? Well, which half, though?
Pardon? Can I make a suggestion?
Which half?
Just a suggestion on this, which is, um, I forget the name of the organization, but, uh, Shante was sitting there, obviously been around the block on this, that, oh, here, this, Russ, he's back there. Yeah, sorry. Um, that, I don't know how much you have them involved, Carl, uh, but to get them ever more involved, with respect, or Arlene.
We're, so, so the first part was to provide us with that roadmap. We are going to talk with them further about having, help some, maybe not to exceed amount to helping navigate us through this process. And then eventually, we're going to have a request for proposals to actually design and.
All right, leaving aside the process, I'm just talking about the substance, which is there needs, I think, I'm hearing what Collier County has already done with their municipalities. We have plenty, this is, we have plenty of friends in Lee County, but I think we need to have pressed this point of what our, pardon me, what our agenda is, what, what we think is important, and maybe she can be helpful with respect to that. Uh, to start, besides sending them lists, to have real conversations about what we're doing and what our priorities are. Just so we're not sitting here in three months' time, and we get something from the county which is like, oh gee, it would have been nice if you would have told us that sooner, uh, which sometimes we can hear from them. So, you know, in fairness to them, try to, you know, and maybe she can be helpful, and our colleague in the back there can be helpful as well. It's just a thought, Carl, whatever you.
I also feel that way about South Florida Water Management, because in, in private conversations I've had with them, I suggested that I was a little disappointed that we didn't have some of their engineers come in here and propose projects. Uh, and I, and I said, because I'm not an engineer myself, and I thought that these were the experts. And I know that they are thinking about certain things, but it seems to me that that would be something that a municipality would expect from them. Um, I mean, they didn't really respond negatively or positively, but that was just my naive opinion or inexperienced opinion. So I think we need to be, I would like us to be, uh, more interactive with them, and not to be afraid that we want to advance our concepts. Not to tell them the specific projects, but pretty much tell them what we really think needs to have to be done, because we have had, experts give us opinions. Um, so I, I believe that for Lee County, and I believe that for South Florida Water Management. And I don't know about the state, you know?
No, and I think, Amy, your point's well taken. When you, we, we talk about them, me for one is, uh, are reaching out, and others, I know, reaching out, and we've organized the executive director to come over here from the East Coast on February 2nd, and you'll be hearing from our staff here to get those scheduled, so you'll have one-on-one time. Um, we've also, we've reached out, a few of us have met with, uh, one of the, um, directors on the Board of Directors, uh, setting up to meet another one. I mean, we, we need to get to know them, and we need to continue the outreach. So many of us have met with one of the members on the Board of Directors. Uh, there is another one here locally that I will be meeting with, uh, locally. I think other members have met locally, and I can help organize that. We have the executive director coming over, so when we're looking at reaching out, I think we're doing good, and I think what we need to somehow balance here, going back to my earlier statement, we need to get to know them before we tell them what to do. We need to get to know them to work together, to get, have a project come together. I don't think that's rocket science, but some things that have happened in recent weeks are, well, let's pass an initiative, let's have a joint meeting, and tell Tallahassee to tell them what they need to do, I think is the wrong approach. And if you haven't heard that or picked up on that.
You're talking about Big Cypress.
And we're, and, and other initiatives, and other initiatives.
Like what?
Like what? I, I don't know what you're talking about.
Me neither.
Yeah, well, maybe some of that can come into clarity at your meeting with Management District on the 2nd. There, there have been some people trying to say, let's, well, Big Cypress, sure, it starts there, but okay, then let's do some other things and talk about public poker here, but I guess that's where we are. If you want to drag this out, we can do it right now and right here, um, to dictate via Tallahassee what we want them to do. And I was not interested, I can say that, in joining up with Astero and having a joint town meeting to do that for those purposes. You, you have to, everybody's got these bewildered look on their faces.
Because we don't know what you're talking about.
Trust me. Then, then, then there's no need to talk about it.
Right.
But I'm just telling you.
But why don't we talk about what we're doing on a Bonita Springs City Council?
Absolutely. I'm just letting you know that I did not agree to a joint meeting with Astero to do something along these lines.
Okay, good.
But in terms of our initiatives, we're in agreement that we want to properly put our best foot forward with the Water Management, with the, with the Management District and the county with respect to the importance of retention.
Correct.
Right? There's, there's no, we're all on one page on that. That's not too assertive, right? Okay.
Yeah, and I, and truthfully, I mean, we've been talking to them more than we ever had. I mean, my God, I talked to.
That's one here.
Rick Barber and Phil Fudd probably once or twice a week, uh, sometimes one-on-one in person and all that.
So are they on board for, I know they're on board for Logan Boulevard. I know they're on board for snagging the river, all right? But are they on board as to the importance of additional retention?
And let, and let me interject here, because I said it earlier. I'd, I'd said, uh, they're looking for our wish list at this meeting on February 2nd. They're looking for our wish list of projects and things to do.
All right. To, to be specific, things like increasing water retention from this to this, no. That take, that's, that's going to take time. Let me just say this, even when they want to change their regulations, it usually takes five years to make a change. I mean, they don't.
Well, you're talking about regulation. How about water retention in areas that Jim Beaver talked about?
Or other areas.
Or other areas.
Right.
Are they on board with that?
They think, they think that that's a good idea, but they're, but, let me see if I can make simple. If we got everything we want to buy, I doubt if there's 10,000 acres there. A lot of that land we want to buy already has got a one foot of water sitting on it. We're saying we're not going to increase that of any significance, at least that's what one of the main proposals is. There's 80,000 acres in water storage that Crewe and South Florida Water Management owns on the north side of Bonita Beach Road and extending up Bonita Grande. So if you do the arithmetic, if we bought 10,000 acres, and a lot of it's already got water on it, you're not changing flooding by.
Well, you're giving an engineering opinion.
Right.
You're giving an engineering opinion, and I think we just got a rec, I mean, are you disputing what Jim Beaver said?
I've just given you numbers.
No, I'm asking, you're bringing up a point, and we've just got a presentation that there were cer- certain water retention that he thought was important, and he described how he thinks it would work, and you're saying you don't think it's going to work?
No, I'm saying it's not, it can't change it much more, you'd be lucky to get a 10% improvement if we bought all that land. Because if, if it's already got water on it, all you're doing is guaranteeing that nobody's going.
All, all these projects have a minuscule percentage of improvement, every one of them. That's why when I, we had this discussion earlier, I said, we need a smorgasbord. And we'd be foolish to think that if we do, again, we have to pick on the favorite, uh, project, which is Logan Boulevard Conveyance.
Like, that doesn't take care of the flooding.
That percentage, God knows what that would take care of either. We can't just do one. It has to be a smorgasbord.
No, no. Amy, I didn't say, I, I get the impression that we think that if we buy up this acreage that that's going to be.
Can I ask a different question, Fred?
Yeah.
Which is, could you just, with all respect, answer my question?
Yeah.
Which has got nothing to do with our individual views. What is, in your view, the Water Management District? In other words, I have a concern with respect to the Water Management District, but I'm, I'm hearing progress is being made, so I want to see.
And you'll be meeting with them on the 2nd.
Well, I'm not, I'm not available that day, but, but, uh, but no, but you, people have been meeting with them, including talking to them once or twice a week. So that's what I'm trying to find out, which is, as you know, and I, this is no secret, I, I've said it here, um, you know, there was something written in the Naples paper by a senior person at the Water Management District that said, a month or two ago, flooding was caused by down trees in the river in Bonita Springs. That was the cause of the massive flooding at Bonita Springs, all right? We all agree, with all respect, that is not the reason we flooded, right? Not that it doesn't help to clean a river.
That's right.
So, uh, and since then, I've heard a lot of good things about one project, which is important, important to the, uh, to Worthington, to Village Walk, to San Remo, et cetera, which is the possibility of Logan Boulevard going south. Uh, including that coming from the Water Management District. But my question is, we're talking about more than that, and what is their view generically about that? Is, is, is their view that retention, no matter what you do, is a drop in the bucket and forget about it? Or are they starting to believe that the flooding was caused by more than a down tree in the river?
Oh, I think they believe that it was caused by a lot more than down trees.
Okay, that's good.
In the river. I do believe that they believe that the basic thing, it's a huge problem.
Right.
And that's, and, but they als- also have a realistic that when you, they're, they're in favor of us buying land. Phil Fudd from Water Management was with Peter Simmons and I when we went and called on 15 elected officials in dais.
That's what I'm asking.
But I'm just saying, they, they're not as enthusiastic about it as we may be as to what.
But that doesn't mean we can't get there.
No.
We're in agreement, right?
That's the question.
We're in violent agreement, they're in soft agreement, that's still agreement.
Yeah.
Is that right? That's where we are?
I, I would classify it a little better than that, but it's, yeah. And, and all I was trying to do was bring us down to the real world. I wasn't saying, don't do what we're doing, but you got to understand that when you do all that, if we got all of it, you're not, you're going to gain a lot of other things, too.
Mayor, with all due respect, we got a healthy agenda ahead of us. Can we move on?
Well, this is flooding in Bonita Springs. I'm about through, but I, this is the reason why.
All right.
I, you know, I'm trying to find out where our major governmental partners with, you know, half-billion-dollar budgets are with respect to flood control in our city, Steve.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm sorry to hold it up, but.
Well, y'all are going to, you're going to, you're going to all have an opportunity to talk to the, uh, what is it, the executive director?
Executive Director.
And on top of that, when we met with the other board member from this area, it turns out, I think Peter O'Flin was not, you weren't here that day.
I wasn't here.
But for those that were here, I went out, I came in and got each one of you and said, hey, go in there and sit down and talk to them. I know Amy saw him, I know that Greg DeWitt saw him, I offered it to Stephen, and he was doing something else. So it is, it is better, let's leave it that way.
And I think the process will, obviously needs to continue and will continue. And everybody's got their schedules, so, um, you know, we can try to do a better job with scheduling on that, but it needs to happen. It isn't going to be solved and resolved today.
Yeah.
Although we can try to resolve it today. If we could, it'd be great.
Right.
Good work. Fred, do you have any more updates? Because you've got quite a bit of information here.
No, no, you can go through it and.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great, okay. Then we're done with item C. Item nine is a second reading and public hearing of the following ordinance. Uh, public comment is allowed here. Audrey?
Uh, thank you. I'll read the title block into the record. I reviewed the affidavit of publication, it is legally sufficient. This is an ordinance of the City of Bonita Springs relating to disaster debris removal from private communities, providing for conflicts of law, severability, codification, inclusion in code, and squirmers, errors, and effective date. Uh, this is second reading of the ordinance. During the first reading of the ordinance, Councilman Forbes had made a comment as to, um, one of the provisions in the ordinance as it related to the gates on the roads, and that section was modified, the gated, uh, communities. So before, we had a mandatory requirement during the, um, emergency, gates must be kept up. Uh, that was removed, that was modified so that instead, uh, they must provide reasonable access for emergency vehicles and any debris, and if it's unable to be open, then they're required to keep the gates up or secured in an open position, but only if they're not able otherwise to function.
Okay.
And, uh, this is a request by FEMA to have such ordinances. This makes itself authenticating to be able to seek, uh, public assistance for private debris removal.
Okay, great. Uh, council, anything before we go to public comment? Okay, public comment?
Yeah, Rick Steinmeier. Uh, from reading through that, if one person decides whether we have a disaster or not, that's the mayor, what if he's out of town? And he also lives in a gated community, which benefit from being able to pick this stuff up. Is there a conflict there? That's my question. Thank you.
Thanks, Rick. Audrey?
If I may respond.
Sure.
First of all, the charter calls for the mayor to be in charge of martial law. Uh, we also, so you are the person.
Yeah.
Consistent with our charter, as well as, uh, some sort of state statutes that also discusses this. Now, we have a deputy mayor for that purpose in the event that you're not able, um, you're out of town, or somehow you're not, you know, physically able to be involved in the emergency. And we also have that after the deputy mayor, in the event that the deputy mayor has, say, a potential conflict, or also has a disability, it would be any city council number. So we do have an emergency ordinance, basically how to pick those straws when necessary.
Okay, great.
Excellent.
Council, Amy, do you have something?
No. Should we get you a uniform?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's scary to say martial law to any elected official.
Martial law, right.
So move, I mean, move to adopt the ordinance.
Yeah.
Second?
Okay, there's been a motion and a second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Councilman Slackta.
Hi.
Mayor Simmons.
Hi.
Councilman O'Flin.
Hi.
Councilman Gibson.
Hi.
Councilman Forbes.
Hi.
Councilwoman Karamba.
Hi.
Okay, and we're at a public comment right now. If there's members of the public that would like to speak, please come forward.
Uh, this rendering of Old 41, I showed it to Jim Beaver, and he was kind of upset about the handling of the river part of this. And when I looked at this one picture of it, it's, everything is covered with concrete. You're not going to be able to walk through there in August or during the summer. It might work during season when it's cool, but it's going to be hot as a pistol, and that destroys the, the Florida, the big porches to get the shade and stuff, but to walk around on, on brick pavers and, and all concrete, it'd be awfully hot. That's just an observation. Thank you. It's a beautiful picture, though.
Thank you, Rick. Other members of the public? Welcome.
Hi, how are we all doing? Uh, my name is Joe McHarris, I'm with McHarris Planning and Design, local business owner for the last 20, 20 years here. We're respectfully asking that after staff presents their, um, item 12B, that we might be able to show you, uh, some slides, since we have a project that's in the moratorium area, and we'd like to bring you up to, to speed on what we're doing, and then hopefully get some help with the, uh, direction for staff, since we're in a, a holding pattern at this point. And this is, again, the Causeway site, so. That's it. We're just, we're respectfully asking to give some presentation at that point, okay?
Thank you. Welcome, John.
Hello, thank you. John West for the record. I'd like to talk about, uh, kids and soccer fields. I'd like to talk about kids and soccer fields. I think it is priority number one to get those fields up and running, and there's nothing worse than if you were a kid sitting at home, knowing that you want to play soccer and you can't because of what's happened. So if I may make a suggestion, Nicole said that she can't find any contractors to put up the fences. We've got plenty of resources around here, and it only needs a phone call from someone in the city, I'm sure, to somebody like GL, look, we're in a jam, can you help us out? And I'm sure they would do it. My suggestion.
Thank you, John. Other members of the public? Okay, seeing none, we're moving on now to the city attorney's report.
Thank you, counsel. I have one item on the agenda, and it's, again, medical marijuana. When we last talked about this in November, city council, I told you, you had a couple of months to wait and see. We're at the point that your moratorium will expire March two, so this is pretty much close to a drop dead date. Unfortunately, I was more optimistic than I had wished, because I had thought that the legislature would have put in some legislation to modify the statute as to the preemption issues. There are some statutes out there, none of them, however, as of my last time checking, modified the preemption, which is that local governments can either allow medical marijuana facilities within their jurisdiction, or they can regulate them, but if they regulate them, they have, they're limited to the same as a drugstore. And the problem about the drugstore pharmacy is that we allow them virtually everywhere. If counsel takes a look at the packet I provided, in addition to the different proposed legislation, which you can see that was reviewed, there's a small little update, nine-page document. It's really just a one page as far as the text, and then there are photographs showing, and that was one of the things that counsel had requested, to see exactly what is the medical marijuana facilities. The one that's located in Lee County is on page two. This one is in existence by True Leaf. I put some other interior shots of True Leaf and some exteriors of what a facility looks like. Sertara, Knox, Curleaf did not, Pure Leaf did not have any, they do have facilities open, but they didn't have any photographs. I did request and I didn't receive it. And then the final page here has a list of the actual locations, and yellow is highlighted, southwest Florida area, which is North Fort Myers and Bradenton all have a facility at this time. Counsel, it's really your pleasure, if you wish for me to have it banned and have it run shortly after the ordinance expires the moratorium, I do need that direction. Alternatively, you can allow the moratorium to expire, and there are some facilities that are interested in this jurisdictional area, whether they actually come or not, I have no idea, but...
What exactly did Astero do?
Astero actually had this discussion, and I believe their last action is they have not done, they've done the moratorium, but they haven't done anything since the moratorium. In other words, a permanent ban. They originally had a permanent ban coming forward, and I thought they had, they had a big discussion about it, and then they ended up not having the permanent.
And what has Collier County done? Do you know, offhand?
It changes. Collier County, I believe, is currently going through the adoption process for a moratorium.
Are those in...
Naples had regulations that they put into place that were grandfathered in, which allows them in medical marijuana, or in medical zones. They have an actual medical zoning provision in Naples.
Two, two questions. One, what's Naples have, and then after you answer that, I want to ask one other one.
The last time I checked Naples, and again, I would, I'm a little uncomfortable because it's been over a year.
Yeah.
But Naples actually has a medical zoning category, and they put them in the medical zoning category. So they did not, as far as I can recall, they did not do a ban.
Right.
But, but the medical zoning only allows pharmacies in the medical zoning also?
It would allow doctors' offices and other things that they permit.
No, but they couldn't put them, something outside of the medical zone.
Correct.
Because they already have the pharmacies within those medical zones.
Right, and they predated the statute.
They predated the statute.
Isn't it, isn't it true that one of the things that the constitutional charter, there's a group up there, I think they're, one of their options looking at is making marijuana legal?
Is that right?
Well, that's my understanding. If we could, if we didn't have to decide right now, I would find out. I should have, but I was, you know, not too well for the last four days. But my biggest concern about not allowing the medical in now is if suddenly recreational use is okay to dispense to, you're probably going to have it one in the same place, unless the statute is taken care of properly, and I don't think the one we got now, a medical, was a very good example of good.
I'd like to make an, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, the statute specifically says only medical marijuana can be sold at medical marijuana, and there is no other type of products, which would include recreational marijuana or anything else. So the statute is very strongly towards only medical marijuana, it's a division, it's a Department of Health statute. Now, whether or not the state would modify its regulatory scheme, if recreational was adopted, that, that could happen.
Yeah, that's my concern.
Is there a saturation aspect incorporated into the state law?
Yes. The state law is very concerned as to the amount of facilities, and that's why they have the vertical alignment, along with, they have a very, they have a limitation. I believe the limitation is about 425 facilities are maximum.
Like, for example, if we raised, if we didn't have the ban, and then we would accept applications, how many could we have?
I believe eleven would be the maximum.
We could have eleven within our community?
That would be the max, well, if everybody decided they were going to build, everybody who is entitled to build decided on Benita Springs, that would be it now, that would be oversaturation, obviously.
And then if the population increased another hundred thousand, we'd get some more, right, or something, whatever.
Right.
Can I make a suggestion? We find out what Astero actually has done, and also Naples and Collier County, and then look at it.
Yeah, I would agree with that, Peter, because I thought there was a permanent ban in Astero.
Okay, I know that they considered it now.
An extended, yeah, an extended moratorium until we figure that out.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so, right, another extension.
Well, do we need it now? We're in January. You said it expires in March?
March two, so I need to get on it.
Well, I'd like to figure out what they did.
So let's bring this back after we know what Astero and Collier and Naples have done, and...
Do it concurrently, so that...
That's fine.
But we have the provision in the, in the moratorium to abrogate it when we want to, correct?
Absolutely.
So we could do the, extend the moratorium, and if something else come up, we could change it. So why don't we just extend the moratorium now and...
Well, she's doing that.
Extend the temporary moratorium, and not do a permanent ban, just extend the temporary moratorium.
Correct, correct.
And six months or one year?
Six months.
Six months.
They give the legislature time to figure something out this term, and constitutional conventions.
I'm assuming we could extend it again, too.
Those that are eligible for medical marijuana, do they have, they don't have any problems in getting it, do they?
No.
It's mail order.
I was in Hope Hospice, and access was available.
Yeah, they could have it delivered. I mean, it's better than, it's better than having it dispensed.
What's the turnaround time? Okay, I need it tomorrow? No. Probably.
Yeah, I believe it's pretty quick.
It is pretty quick.
If the patient is that sick, yes, it's quick.
Do you need a vote on that?
I think I have my direction, six-month extension, survey of local governments, as whether they did permanent or what's going on with them currently.
Mm-hmm.
And I just, I just have one question. Is the city or staff giving any direction to the legislature about what kind of bill we think we could work with?
There are other groups that, Florida League Cities have been involved.
Are we participating, do we have in our ideas, or...
I have not participated recently in it. I...
I'm curious what we think we want to get out of the state, you know, that would be helpful.
Mainly so that we have zoning power.
All right, so we just have complete zoning power to determine where it goes? Is that what we're aiming for?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
But are there any bills actually filed that would do that, though, Audrey?
No.
No.
At this point, when I went through all the legislation, I went through all the bills filed, and if you pull open the report, you'll see there's a page, and it says West Law, and it has all the different locations, or all the different bills. I went through them, and none of them dealt with the preemption. I believe it's section 11 of the statute. It dealt with other provisions internal with that statute.
So we need to advocate for some abrogation of the preemption?
Right, in my understanding, there are people advocating on the issue right now as to the preemption. So I thought that the preemption was going to be something picked up. Everyone, the legislative analysis, I had heard it was going to be picked up and reviewed because they didn't understand the consequences of how they drafted it. So they were going to make some modifications to it, and that part has not been picked up. Now, any of these, the thirty-six that are on the page I provided you, any of these could be modified and have that language popped in. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Audrey, anything else?
No, that's it. I'll be bringing back an ordinance to you. Thank you, sir.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, monthly capital projects report, we've submitted that. Any questions?
Yep, good.
Moving on to B, looking for counsel's direction. Jackie Gensen is here to chat a little bit about our temporary moratorium with relate, as relation, as it relates to Benita Beach Road Visioning.
Good afternoon, city council. For the record, Jacqueline Gensen with Community Development. I will try to be brief in respect for your time. I do know it's been a long meeting for everyone. But what's transpired, as outlined in the moratorium, there are some relief valves, as we call them, to review certain projects during this moratorium period, and that's in section three E and three H of the ordinance. And what has happened since the adoption of this ordinance, we have had significant inquiries for property owners through pre-application meetings, also site development permits that have come in for development, and some of the concepts that were brought to light in the vision, such as building placement, street network, the location of roundabouts, have come up in discussions where, when the adoption of the moratorium had taken place, there were some exemptions or other relief in concepts that were implemented for other projects in the interstate zone, but now I have projects coming in the historic zone that are seeking similar direction on those concepts. So, and those concepts really geared towards building orientation. Do we want buildings directly fronting Benita Beach Road, or Old Forty-One, or racetrack? And then the road network connectivity, are we going directly with Ian's vision as set forth in the Benita Beach Road final report? So those items, staff is, has opined that what Ian has told us is what we are enforcing unless instructed otherwise. But again, we do have some other private development that is seeking possibly a different avenue, so we're looking for your direction.
What is the private development asking for that's not in line with Ian?
I know.
They asked if they could make a separate presentation? If we could allow that?
That is up to this council's pleasure, whether or not you would like to hear from the public on this matter. Right now, for staff, we were just trying to get some general direction. And I apologize, let's, right here. So this is the diagram that Tool Design Group refers to, and just so you're aware, Tool Design Group is an active participant on our reviewing applications. So in one of our instances, we do have a local development order in for site plan review, and he had provided comments essentially that incorporated themes from the vision. So it's regarding block size and form. He refers to building placement being directly oriented along Old Forty-One and those sections or Benita Beach Road, providing the ability to definitely accommodate the roundabout as a traffic calming device, making sure that we have an adequate street network and that we're not making connections through parking lots. So again, staff is comfortable on some concepts, but the concepts that I'm not comfortable in interpreting, and I would never do without your direction, is the building orientation, and would you entertain allowing parking along the right of Old Forty-One, which was allowed for in certain parts of the interstate zone, where our consultant has recommended that, we do not.
Do we have to, leaving aside what Joe McHarris wants to talk about, do we need to talk about this today?
Other than, we just have projects that are actively under review, but that is up to this council's pleasure.
Well, if it's slowing down them, you know, getting back to an applicant that's looking for answers, then I guess we do have to talk about this today.
Well, we have, I have to say something, even though we want to defer this, is that we have a consultant that's looking all along the Benita Beach Road corridor for a concept. And I believe that we've already adopted the Benita Beach Road visioning study. And we also have this moratorium, and we said that if they want to comply with the existing things, then they would, we would listen to them if they fulfill the mission. And I think the reason that there was some changes in interchange is because the city felt that that was somewhat of a different situation than anything that was closer to here. So if we wanted an answer today, I'd say, just stick with the plan, and we'll live with it. And until we get our study from our concept, where they might suggest something different, unless Ian wants to come forward and say, I want to make an adjustment to my original vision, I don't think the council personally should make a change in that, because I don't think, I'm a planner, I don't see the total picture, that's why we hire consultants, so let's just go forward with them until we have completed all this. That's why we have a moratorium, one of the reasons, besides the lawsuit, but, but, you know, I think we already made the decision, and I think it's, and I remember distinctly, I think I've said this once before, in council, when I asked Ian at one of the workshops, I said, well, how do we accomplish this? And he said, you accomplish this by sticking to the plan and having the council have the courage to say what they, to do what they say they want to do. So at some point, we're going to have to put our foot down and say, this is what we're trying to accomplish, and until we fail, we're going to try to be successful. And that's my opinion.
And I share that opinion.
Yeah, that sounds good.
It's very, very well stated.
I'm sorry.
No, my goodness, that's fantastic.
Two twenty-three.
Yeah, no, no, I think that's excellent. I mean, is...
I motion to adjourn.
Yeah, no, but, but with that, right? Think about that. What, what is there to discuss? And I'm, with all due respect, and I mean it, with what she just said, what is there for us that we're not, that we need to discuss?
Staff just wanted to make sure the direction was clear, that we are following through with that plan that was set forth by the vision.
Sure. Great, no, I think that's fantastic, and I don't think there's a need to try to put a chink in any armor. I think we move forward with the Benita Beach Road Visioning Study, we move forward with the moratorium, we've discussed those for hours, and days, and months, and years, and... Counsel, what else on this?
Sounds good.
Okay.
Do we need a motion?
Do we need a vote?
It was just direction to staff.
Excellent, thank you. Thank you for your great work. Thank you. Carl?
The next item will be handled by Arlene.
Good afternoon. The, the Public Works Director, along with myself, have worked with the MPO on upcoming projects to submit for the next funding cycles, which are, are a longer process to go through or moving forward. Two of those projects that were clearly identified in our bicycle pedestrian master plan, and as a part of keeping with our Complete Streets Initiative, are the corridors of Benita Beach Road bicycle and pedestrian pathway, as well as Imperial Parkway. Both of those facilities are located on county, our county facilities. So within the MPO process, Lee County Department of Transportation staff has requested that the city provide in writing a request to be able to add those two facilities to the MPO list as potentially funded for feasibility studies. So at this time, we will be looking for council's direction to have a letter drafted by the city manager to the county manager formally requesting the ability to apply for those funds.
So moved.
Second?
Okay, there's been a motion and a second?
Amy's second.
Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flin?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Karamba?
Aye.
Councilman Slackta?
Great.
That's all we have, Mayor.
Okay, great, thank you. Mayor and council member items, Amy, we'll start down with you. You're good?
I'm done.
Okay. Peter?
Well, I did want to, I had it earlier in the agenda, but I didn't, I didn't have it on the agenda, but a report on a trip to Tallahassee, because it's two twenty-six, I'll make this quick. I did send an email around, but it was a productive six-hour trip for an eight-hour meeting, and six hours back, all within a day and a half, with Don Scott, the executive director of the MPO, and Nick Bedos, councilperson from Astero. And we did, so this is at the Florida Greenways and Trails Council, which is a state body under the aegis of the Department of Environmental Protection, and they reversed unanimously the staff recommendation to remove the railroad as a priority trail on the Sun Trail Network. So we all felt pretty good about it. And the other nice part about it is, by the time you added it all up, there was some between eight hundred and fifty and a thousand emails from Astero, from Benita, particularly Pelican Landing and Benita Bay, that went to Tallahassee. That clearly got the attention of the council. That clearly got the attention of the council, and particularly the attention of Eric Draper, who is the new Department of Parks head, who went out of his way to compliment Benita Springs and Estero for their civic engagement with respect to this. So it was a nice experience, in my view, of kind of government listening and government working. So I just wanted to report on that.
Peter, what would be the cost of removing the rail?
Well, we're not at that point yet. In other words, but this is a necessary building block. Without it, we wouldn't have had a very important piece of the foundation under us to build momentum toward hopefully getting to the point where we could have a nine-and-a-half-mile rail trail from Benita Beach Road to Estero Parkway. The other thing is, I wanted to thank Carl. He sent us that email about the meeting with the county. And I think the more we meet with them and express our views, the better. Any and all of us, is my view, as long as we're coordinated, of course. Last thing, I wanted to ask Mike how he's doing on his chats with BSU?
I have a meeting coming up with him.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, last thing. On Logan, it would be helpful the next time, I didn't really think it would be the most constructive thing to do with him standing here, the fellow, but I'm assuming they had obligations before we asked them to do anything on Logan.
Absolutely.
All right? And that would have cost a certain dollar amount. So I didn't want to get into the dollars while he had them up there. I'm assuming a big part of that he's responsible for anyhow.
There, that is correct. There will be a net number that's going to shake out of this, and that is where council will need to decide to what degree you're looking at road impact fee credits, or whatever it's going to be.
So I think that would be the most, one of the most helpful things staff could come back to council with. Is that fair? I mean, you know.
Do you know that number? Do you know the number?
No.
Okay.
All right. I heard a no, a definite no.
No, because he had 4.3 million up. I'm assuming he had a pre-existing obligation in the millions to build a road.
And just to be advised, you may have a different opinion from staff than you do from the, from-
Oh, that's good. All right. Even better. Okay.
Another controversy.
Yeah.
And I want to thank Fred for the report on the water management district. And I think one thing could be helpful as we go forward with various people in meeting, and it's a good thing, obviously, to have various people in meeting, is that we could centralize with the city manager so that we can get regular reports from him. I mean, it can be offline, it can be here, about what the status is with the water management district. So we're all rowing the same way. I think we more or less are, but I think it'd be help with respect to coordination on that.
Yep.
Great. Thanks, Peter. Yep, thanks. Mike?
I'm good. If we're not allowing Joe to make a presentation on what they were looking for at Causeway, I'd be happy to meet with them after the meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Fantastic. Fred?
Yeah, the only thing I was going to tell you, and I'm taking up time, but I would have had it really for this meeting, and Carl asked me to kind of pull it. It's a good thing, because he forecast my illness.
He forecast your illness?
But I do, I do have to send out to you by email, you'll probably get it by Thursday or Friday this week, two different evaluation forms, not one, but two. And actually, there's a subset to that. But the number one thing, at the next meeting we have, we're going to, we're going to do some housekeeping stuff before you start critiquing both of these if you want to, because one of them's going to go by the wayside. We're going to decide on, there's several of you that want to have public evaluation discussion in this room. So we're going to decide, does the majority want that or not? The second one is, are we going to have points, or are we going to have descriptive adjectives only? And then which one of these style forms you like the best? They're different in the criteria. And once we pick one, that doesn't mean that you can, you can't take stuff from the other one and put in it, and also say, "Well, I'd like to bring this idea from Fort Myers Forum or whatever," and stick in there. That way, we can get this. Hopefully, very quickly, I'll have a draft of the city attorneys to look at, too. I hope I don't have to do two, but I might.
Okay. And we, another item that we didn't bring up today, and that we will next meeting, I'd like to have it on the agenda for next meeting, please, is when we're talking here about the wonder gardens and the tenant that they have. Carl, any updates to report there? Any progress?
No, sir.
Okay.
There are hopefully going to be future discussions with their attorney. When do you expect that, Audrey?
I spoke with the attorneys yesterday, and I sent a file, I can provide counsel with a copy of it. What they suggested, this is with just Twisted Tangle, the restaurant, there were some maintenance concerns, there's some other concerns with the facilities, basically creating a wish list of, these are some of the things that are out there that possibly do a lease amendment, and see if that could be constructed. I can provide you a copy of that memorandum, or that email that I provided to Josh Bialik, the lawyer.
Yeah, no, that'd be great. And I, look, we're talking over $3 million here, are public taxpayers' dollars. I think, you know, we can try to sweep this under the rug, or not, and I don't think there's anybody that would want to do that. But I am, for one, not against having this discussed at a city council meeting, so unless anybody gravely objects, and if you do, please let me know.
No, I, as long as it's out in the open, I'm in favor of discussing anything anybody wants to discuss. I just would, but I don't want to discuss it now, but I would have, like to have, because I don't really understand the responsibility of the city being the lease or now, because we're going to own the property. So when you, when you assume that, because we're the property owner, that changes-
Absolutely.
Right? So some of the responsibility that had been being executed by Benita Wonder Gardens will now be executed by the city, is that correct?
That is correct.
All right. So then we'll, you can flesh this all out, so we really understand what is kind of a normal transition, and if we're asking for anything different from that or not, and-
But at this point, we're just going to meet, see if we can get a meeting of the minds.
Right, fine. Correct.
The email that I'll be sending basically memorializes my conversation with their attorney, listed out different things that we should probably talk about, also mentioned that we have a city charter provision that we do need whenever we have leases, they're supposed to be by ordinance eventually, would be a requirement. So if it was something that we were able to come into being, but I want to make it also clear, the operating agreement does have the city manager, who will take direction from council as to anything-
Great.
-in the agreement, but he's the one who's the negotiator.
Sure, sure. So I'd like to have that on as a discussion item, or an update, whatever we want to call it, for the next meeting. That'd be great. Okay.
Okay.
Fantastic, thank you. And the last thing I want to have, and I know it's been a long meeting here, but, and this will be my last thing. I don't too often delve into other boards' business, but I'm not sure how many of you saw yesterday, the Lee County School District went ahead and put forward a motion, or passed a motion, if you will, for, I'm going to pull it up here, but roughly $900,000, right, that the taxpayers will pay for. They want to have a special election to increase taxes for the school district. Now, if they need money, that's one thing. If they can't manage money, that's another thing. But to do it at a special election and ask the taxpayers of Lee County to pay almost $900,000 to have this special election, I think they need their head examined. I don't know how they can look straight-faced at any one of us in this room, or anybody in Lee County, and say, "Spend almost a million dollars so we can have a special election." A special election, to me, indicates a special interest. I think if this is a public interest, not only a public interest, so public that it ought to be held during a public, normal, regular election, either in August or in November. So if I read the article correctly, they don't get to name the date of their own election, that is up to the county commission. And I'm not sure if anybody in this room can verify that. But I would ask you, I would urge you, I would plead with you to get in touch with the members of the Lee County School District, get in touch with the members of the Lee County Commission, and if they feel that a tax increase is necessary, that's their prerogative to make that recommendation. But to ask us to flip the bill to the tune of a million dollars to have a special election to increase taxes, I think it's absolutely ludicrous, fiscally irresponsible, and borderline, I'll just leave it there, borderline at best. So please, please, please urge them to do that on the August primary or on the November ballot. Because I know I will be in any help and support there, if you agree with that opinion, please, please get involved. Anybody else here? Anything else on the council? Okay, approval of the minutes?
So moved. Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second to approve the minutes? Roll call, please.
Councilman Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes? Councilwoman Karamba?
Aye.
Councilman Zeta?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, public comment. Members of the public that would like to speak, please come forward.
Yes, Mayor. Rick Steinmeier. In attendance to the, I don't know if you're all familiar, that's the Benita Beach Improvement Association has merged with the Benita Beach Association and changed their name to Benita Beach Association. They've changed the signs from Little Hickory Island to Benita Beach. So all my complaining about Little Hickory and Big Hickory Island is kind of gnaw now. It's Benita Beach and Big Hickory Island, I suppose. The biggest concern at the meeting, and it was well-attended, was this bridge that Lee County is proposing to put at Big Carlos, at a cost of like $60 million, to be 55 feet above the water to bring the people from Fort Myers Beach onto Black Island. They're also talking about having a mile of ramp on each side of this bridge to go up this 55. And of course, being that people on Little Hickory Island have a two-lane road, and they don't want a highway down Hickory. And they're very concerned about that. And the outcome of it is that we're recommending that the county pursue a midpoint bridge to get the people off of Fort Myers Beach, rather than running them down Hickory. So that's the local news from, from the Benita Beach Association, and I wish you could, Amy's district, and, well, coming on to Black Island is your district, and going into Steve's district, so I wish you guys could investigate that and see what they're going to do, because there's no need to do that. They could repair that bridge. Why do you need a 55-foot-high bridge when you've got three feet of water in the bay? I mean, you're not going to take steamboats in there. So thanks a lot. Anything else, Amy?
No, I just want to say, Mayor, I want to take my time back-
Okay. Sure, absolutely.
After, because I forgot that I did want to say that, I just got tired after our-
No, absolutely. Yes, yes, sir. Absolutely, Amy. Yes, sir.
Hi, Joe McCarras again. And I just wanted to state that we agree with sticking with the vision plan. But the vision plan doesn't necessarily talk about existing buildings. It does talk about being good, green-friendly development, and that's the issue that we have. We have an existing building that we'd like to be green-friendly, 60,000 square feet of rehab, and there's only one item that doesn't fit within the vision plan, in our opinion. That's why we wanted to bring this forward. Not that we're trying to go crazy out of what the vision plan discusses, because we've read the vision plan, and we believe we put forward a best-practice building and design and development, but it doesn't meet one of the items in only one section of the vision plan. And again, the vision plan talks about green-friendly development, which we are doing, 60,000 square feet of rehabbing a building versus one row of parking in front of the building. That's the issue. So with that said, that's, we were still hoping that you would give staff direction to work with us on that, but thank you.
Thank you, sir. Other members of the public? Seeing none? Amy? Okay. Come on up.
Good afternoon. I'm Steve Hovland, and our group, I wrote down some notes, because I'm not a speaker, but these existing buildings that Joe's talking about, you know, they've been an eyesore for a long time. Our group has made a commitment to improve them, beautify the property, provide access that would benefit the city, the community, by way of connecting Benita Beach Road to Old 41 through our property. We maintain that access, that road, at no cost to the county. It'll be a private section of land that the public can use to access, to connect those two roads. So we look at this as cleaning up a problem in addition to providing the access. We follow guidance and we appreciate, and I actually really agree with a lot of what's been, you know, presented for the vision that you're calling, that you've gotten guidance from professionals to formulate. And we have also a lot of professionals that we turn to in order to put developments together that are good for the community, are good for business, and are financially feasible. And financially feasible is a real important one, which often gets overlooked, because no matter how beautiful the dream is, or the plan is, somebody has to be able to get a mortgage to do it. You could have a developer that wishes he could do it. You may have a development group that plans to do it, but if they can't convince a bank, and they can't, and the bank doesn't get an appraisal to validate that loan, then what you're left with is a bunch of undeveloped land. So the vision never, never comes through to fruition. And that's been the issue with a lot of cities, you know. They, like Naples, they were saying, "Well, you got to have residential over commercial," but they didn't ask anybody, leasing guys, "Can you lease that space?" And you'll find buildings that had commercial on the first floor, like the Benita Beach and Tennis Club, that never rented. And I only have knowledge on a couple things. One is leasing. I've been leasing commercial space for 28 years. I, that's all I know. I'm not good at anything, but I'm one of the better ones in the area for leasing commercial space. I've done as many as 50 transactions in a single year, stores, business spaces of all types. Causeway is, to me, clearly a beneficial to the community for, you know, it beautifies it. It uses a early 1900s-ish architecture. We have a group that is capable to put up the money, has a great team to design the place, will work with staff to do a wonderful job, and I think all of them, by the way, like our deal. And we're capable of financing. In fact, we got a mortgage based on the drawings that Joe and the drawings that Drew have put together for the development. I don't see any negatives. I know he mentioned the one driveway, but all the buildings on both sides of us have the same thing, so if you have us deviate, it's going to look goofy anyway. So I really ask that you consider this, because otherwise, we're left with a lumberyard with a bunch of dilapidated buildings that could otherwise be beautiful, tax-paying businesses in the city. And in comparison to Collier, you're driving up Old 41, there's a lot of junk in Collier County. When you hit the Lee County line, and if you see our project there on the left, we're going to be better than Collier County's industrial park, period, bar none. We'll listen to reason, we'll do what we can, and we'll spend the money to do a good job. We need help. We're sitting here saying, "Please, you guys, help us." We are capable and willing to a point which we get stopped by financing, so, you know, just help us. We're on the team. I grew up here, you know? We want to do a good job. We're not trying to just make money. We're proud of this stuff. If it was just about money, I would go back to college. You know, this is, this is something that's in my blood and my family's blood. We've been here many years, so please consider the Causeway redevelopment.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you so much. Amy?
I had forgotten to mention that, what is today, was it tomorrow? There is a published meeting that's sponsored by Lee County, where they're going to present the PD&amp;E studies for the bridge that Rick mentioned. the PD and E studies for the bridge that Rick mentioned. And there's going to be various alternatives that are presented there, and they're asking for public input, where we could ask questions and say things, just Rick should come and give his opinion, and anyone from the Beach Association should come and do that. We still, there is an opportunity for us to say what we, what preferences are. I'm planning on attending, it's five to seven, I think I even have the address. I forgot the name of it.
I've got that far.
Do you have it? What's the name of the-
Yes. So, it's going, it's from five to seven PM tomorrow afternoon. It's going to be located at the Bay Oaks Recreation Center at twenty-seven thirty-one Oak Street, Fort Myers' Beach.
And we've distributed-
I have a public library at Fort Myers' Beach.
And we've distributed that information to, I mean, I have personally distributed it to Pelican Landing, because there's interest in it, and the people I've spoken to are in agreement with what Rick was saying. Certainly, the people that live near there, where they're looking at the, at the bridge, have advocated the city to get on board with giving our preference, and they want to have the same height that's already there. There's lots of complications to that, but this is the time for people to come forward and articulate what their preferences are. My preference is for a thirty-five-foot bridge, but this is without getting the presentation from Lee County. We do have some, there are some studies that were distributed to the city, preliminary draft reports, but I think the final reports are supposed to be presented tomorrow.
What's thirty-five? What's there now?
Excuse me?
Is thirty-five, what's there now?
Yeah, whatever. I think it's thirty-five. I mean, there's all, we have had discussions with various people, but I think we have those study, the drafts, we already have, that came through our website, so if anybody wants to look them up, they can.
Thank you for that, Amy. I will be out of town, unfortunately, so I can't join you, but we have obviously had a meeting down there, so.
Right.
They don't check with me on schedule, and they just schedule.
That's one of my six meetings I have tomorrow, but I will be attending.
Great.
Hopefully, I'll have dinner before, because you know how I am when I don't eat, so.
Well, don't eat.
Oh, yeah.
Counsel, anything else? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And second, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.